All the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. World's office. Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Jacob Alvin.
President.
Councilmembers Hall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Udi.
Here.
Mayor Shepard Romney.
Here.
Thank you. The agenda is posted, excuse me, the agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Crowne Public Library, and the Recreation Department. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. Before we get started, I'd like to note that this is a particularly long meeting tonight. As a result, the City Council will likely take at least one recess in approximately ten to fifteen minutes. Also, depending upon the number, excuse me, of speakers for each given item, I may limit the length of public comment to two minutes, although we will regularly have three-minute comments. The city clerk will keep time, and at the end of the time, an alarm will go off that sounds like this. Okay? So when we try to make it as kind as, just to let people know that if you do hear that, we would like you to wrap up your comments within the next thirty seconds, since we do have people following. The city always welcomes public input. Members of the public may address the City Council by completing a public comment card they're outside and giving it to the city clerk prior to the meeting, or at any time now would be a good time. The public may address, at this time, the City Council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the City Council may not discuss or take action on the issues not on the meeting agenda. The mayor reserves the right to place limits on duration of comments as we discuss, and staff may be asked to follow up on such items. So, we have one so far, and Mr. Eric Reese, please, would you approach the meeting?
Thank you, Jean.
Good evening, City Council members. Hello, my name is Eric Reese. My comment for future consideration is on a proposal that can help make the city more resilient to extreme temperatures and can help improve quality of life while also reducing healthcare costs and roadway costs for the city. My proposal would be for the city to partner with the county and state in looking into the possibility of using porous reflective pavements as preferred roadway material in the city and for potential regulations in future billing development. Porous reflective pavements can reduce pavement surface temperatures by up to eleven degrees Fahrenheit, can reduce sound levels from vehicles by up to six decibels, can reduce air pollution by reducing cooling demands, and can recharge groundwater supplies by absorbing up to ninety percent of stormwater runoff. These benefits are possible due to the ability of the pavements to reflect heat away from the surface as well as allowing for evaporative cooling to occur. Porous reflective pavements also filter out particulates and reduce water pollution, meaning that they're able to perform the same function as waste water treatment plants but for free. Reducing pavement surface temperatures by up to eleven degrees Fahrenheit would reduce heat exposure hospitalizations by three hundred ninety-three percent and stroke hospitalizations by three percent. Porous reflective pavements also help reduce roadway costs through flexibility. Because porous reflective pavements are not rigid, they are able to tolerate seismic events/earthquakes, extreme temperatures, and weathering at a higher rate than traditional pavements. This results in a decrease in pavement cracks and potholes that occur from stress. Researching the feasibility of porous reflective pavements would help save the city money over the long term, especially in healthcare costs, public works costs, and municipal water costs. With the upcoming rollout of L.A. County's Measure W program in a few years, as well as SB One funds and L.A. Metro Local Return Funds, comes the opportunity to leverage local funds with state and federal funds and establishing a program that can achieve many benefits out of one cost of repaving roadways. I'd highly encourage the city department, the county, and state in looking into porous reflective pavements, as they can help achieve improved quality of life, adapting cities and counties to become resilient to extreme temperatures, and achieve fiscal savings over the long term. Thank you for your time and hopeful consideration, and my proposal that can make the city a leader in innovation and environmental sustainability.
Thank you. I have one question for you, Mr. Reese. Do you have, or can you forward any materials that you're referring to towards city clerk?
Sure.
The address is on the website.
Okay, thank you.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Another public comment from Richard Phan. Am I saying it right?
Yeah.
Please approach. Thank you so much.
This is not in any specific item on the agenda, but it's kind of in response to the town hall meeting I went to the other day. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the changes that they've staffed into the website. I went online, and it's very easy to navigate, a lot of good navigations to find information. The only thing I would like to add is if you can add the Metro proposals on there. I was looking for those, just wanted to refresh my memory on what those topics were. But a lot of the other stuff is there, which is great. The other thing I'm concerned about is I was reading that they are submitting that new proposal for the SB fifty.
Sure.
And I'm really concerned about how that's going to impact our community. So I just wanted to emphasize that the City also take a proactive approach to taking a position on that and opposing it, because I think it's going to be detrimental to our community. And I think we, as a community, should be proactive in trying to figure out how we can address that particular issue. And I know the housing crisis is a big issue for everybody, but we just have to be aware of how that's going to impact us and what we can do as a community to try and address that in a positive way, to maintain our neighborhoods. The other item I wanted to briefly touch on was the public safety. You mentioned, Mayor, that the study was completed, and they were going to be decreasing the speed limit on some roads. I'm hoping that one of those roads is going to be a Lorraine Road, but I do appreciate that that has been moved on and hopefully will slow traffic down to be more safe. Because Lorraine Road, San Marino, I live on Lorraine, traffic does get pretty fast. Usually during the morning, usually in the afternoon when people are going home. But I appreciate that. We will be taking care of some of those issues. So I just wanted to come out and express my thanks to some of the things that the city's moving on, and hopefully that we'll take a more proactive approach to street safety, public safety, and then looking at all this, the whole issue with the housing within our community.
And just to respond, I do think that Director Savas, along with our city attorneys, and as well as some of the council members, we have legislative liaisons, and Mr. Tal, or Councilmember Tal, because you may want to speak to that, but we're actively monitoring a lot of that legislation in regards to how it affects our city, for your first point.
Just quickly, there is a website, and I don't have the actual website now, where you could donate in and go in a larger group that is opposing fifty. I get their emails because I'm an opposition, but I will get that information for you, and I'll pass it on to the clerk.
Thank you very much. We have any other public comments at that time, at this time?
Well, that happens.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the city manager's report. This is the opportunity for the city manager to inform the City Council of public of any upcoming events that matter of interest to the committee.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I apologize for my voice. I am getting over the cold that I think half the world has right now. Apologies for that. First, just a procedural item, so that you are aware, we're pulling item two from the agenda tonight. Mr. Kenley, who was slated to recognize for his volunteerism, he unfortunately is ill and did not make it tonight, so we'll be working with him. Yes, he also must have the cold that half the world has. So we'll be working with him to postpone that and reschedule it for a future meeting. So that will be pulled from your agenda tonight. In addition to our previous last year here, I'd like to congratulate on the town hall Monday night. First town hall meeting of the year was related to the State of the City Address. This is something that we're doing annually now. Mayor Shepard Romney presented, and despite some of the strange audio/video issues that we had in the room, the presentation from the mayor was fantastic, and I appreciate everybody who came out and heard an update about the city. These slides from that presentation will be up on the website. Also, to our previous speaker, we will give you direct information about Metro, but I promise you, the Metro staff is on the website, as will the slide be from the State of the City, and we also will be posting the video from that town hall meeting for anyone who was unable to attend. We do these town hall meetings every month, the first Monday of the month, at 6:00 p.m. all the time. We do them in the bathroom at Crowne Public Library. We keep it to one hour to try to be respectful of everybody's time and not intrude too much on your family time, but we hope that you'll join us. We do have regularly scheduled topics, as well as different topics that come up from time to time based on community interest. The State of the City is a regular one that we do every January now, so thank you for that. Our next meeting will be on February third, and we'll be talking about the budget. We'll be talking about some of the budget priorities that the City Council will be considering for next year or so. This is your opportunity to come out and give us your thoughts and tell us what's important to you in next year's budget. So please come out on February third, 6:00 p.m. over at the library. And just in case you're a planning ahead kind of person, our March meeting, which is March second, will be more on community engagement. It's almost like I paid our previous speaker to do great transitions for me. We have just launched a new website. Our March meeting will be talking a little bit more about that, more about the social media program that we're going to be launching, and how to engage better with the community. So come tell us how we can do that a little bit better, so we can connect with you. And then in April, if you're really a plan ahead person, we'll be talking about code enforcement, which is near and dear to this community's heart. So come on out and join us for those. I want to turn to budget. This is so early in January that our December month is not quite closed yet, so as of November thirtieth, just as an FYI, our budget is forty-two percent complete in terms of that year. We're on track in terms of general fund expenditures, which are tracking at about forty-four percent complete. Revenues don't quite come in as smoothly because property taxes come in at separate and discreet times during the year, not smoothly over the course of the fiscal year, but we did get our first property tax apportionment on December twentieth. It was indeed five percent higher than last year, which is what we projected in the budget, so we are on track with that. If you are one of those budget and finance type people, we have two items of interest for you. Tonight, we'll be discussing our audit of our last fiscal year. Our Finance Director will be presenting tonight in addition to our auditor with a presentation on how last year looked. And if you come back again next month on February twelfth, our Finance Director will be doing a mid-year report for this year and also projections for next year. Far away from money, we'll talk about community programming and recreation, the fun, hard issue. We, as many of you know, we've been working on revisioning for the recreation programming. Pleased to tell you that the survey, as I think the council is aware, has been complete. We've gotten the results of that. Hopefully, those of you in the audience were some of the people who filled out those surveys and gave us some information on what you're looking for. The survey will be officially, the results will be officially presented to the council at our next meeting, which is Friday, January thirty-first. We will be doing a preview for the community Thursday evening, January twenty-third. That will be from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. over at the bathroom. We like to utilize our library, so please come on out and hear what the survey turned up and give your thoughts as we continue moving forward. We'll be presenting a proposal on the revised program to council during the budget process this year. Of course, with help from our liaisons, Councilmember Tal, and Vice Mayor Udi. In terms of some employee news, I just have two announcements to make. One is our very own Police Chief, John Contra, was sworn in just this week as president of the L.A. County Police Chiefs Association. That is a nonprofit corporation that includes all of the police chiefs in L.A. County, for all cities in L.A. County that have police departments. That's about forty-five. They all get together, they work on policing issues, they do collaboration, they do training, talk about best practice, so it's really an honor for us and a big feather in our path that John Contra has been appointed as president to that. And then, just a personal congratulations, I just want to announce that our Community Engagement Manager, Amanda Fowler, who's actually been in charge of the website, is pregnant. And so, congratulations to her. Her baby is going to be due in June. I am hard at work to figure out how I'm going to replace her while she's gone, before she comes back, but it's very exciting. And so, we have so many people in the room tonight, I think she's probably out in the lobby, but congratulations to Chief Contra and Community Engagement Manager Fowler for two completely different accomplishments.
Make sure you separate them. First HR manager.
I'm not going into any details, just congratulations for that. So thank you all for listening. I'm going to have to hear the mayor. That's my meeting.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carter. May I have a motion to wave further greetings?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Seeing none, thank you. Our first item of business is ceremonial, and this comes to us to mark a sad occasion and the passing of truly a pillar of our community. We have the family members present, and we are going to, we have a proclamation for former Councilmember Gene Dryden, who was a former mayor, and among other things, a mayor for two years. He was on a planning commission for almost ten years. Honorary Paul Harris Road Reed Fellow, San Marino Distinguished Citizen Award winner. He chaired the campaign to rebuild and dedicate the San Marino War Memorial. As well as, I understand, just recently, he's also one of the founding members of the Old Mill Board or Foundation. And I'm sure there is many, many other things. I hope everybody did take the time to read an excellent piece by Mr. Linkman in the San Marino Tribune, and also the peace tribute to the great work that Mr. Dryden did. So it's a loss for our community, and we're very, very grateful for the outstanding work that he did here in San Marino and I'm sure in the larger Southern California. We do have a proclamation, and I would like to read a part of it that's relevant, and then if other council members would like to speak, and I know that, and Mrs. Dryden, if you would like to come up for your comments as well.
Madam, would you please, everybody, I'm sure the camera's outside, I just thought that you could speak closer.
Closer and with the mic on.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'm sorry for everybody outside, but you will hear. I would like to read the proclamation, so everybody knows some of the things that we're recognizing that he did for the city. It's presented in honor of Gene Dryden, who dedicated his time and efforts to serving his community. Whereas Gene Dryden served as a council member from April nineteen eighty-eight to March two thousand and one. Whereas Gene Dryden served as vice mayor from April nineteen ninety to April nineteen ninety-two. Whereas Gene Dryden served as mayor from April ninety-two to April ninety-four. Whereas Gene Dryden served as planning commissioner from October nineteen seventy-nine to March nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen eighty-eight, excuse me. Whereas former Mayor Gene Dryden dedicated countless hours to serving his community, both as a council member and a planning commissioner. He dedicated himself to serving and supporting the community of San Marino, offering his experience and support to the San Marino Historical Society, the San Marino City Club, San Marino Boy Scout, Troop Three Five Eight, and the Old Mill Foundation. And as mayor, he was a frequent visitor to City Hall to expeditiously complete city business. He was always a pleasure to work with in my interactions. It has always been a genuine inspiration to me in terms of his public service. Now therefore, I question Shepard Romney, Mayor of San Marino, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the city of San Marino, do hereby recognize and honor Gene Dryden for his long devoted service to the people of the city of San Marino. So, thank you for all of that. And I'd like to introduce the family members who are present. I think I have them right, so correct me if I'm wrong. Ann Dryden, his wife. We have Lori Dryden Modine, who's his daughter. Paul Modine, Contra Modine, and Gracie Modine are over here. John Dryden, his son.
Jim.
Jim, I'm sorry. It's my misreading, Jim, I'm sorry. Michelle Dryden. Piper Dryden. Kathleen Dryden. Gillian Dryden. And you're going to head.
Head.
Dryden, I'm sorry. You're over there. Sorry about that. Thank you so much for coming and being here tonight, and we wish you the best and offer our sincere condolences as well. I don't know, Ann, if you'd like to speak to the community at this time?
Sure. I have to say that I was really going to just stand up and just talk, but I don't think I can do it. So I brought a few notes here that I'd like to just say, and I'm really saying this to you all. I wanted to thank each one of you, for myself and for our family, for your thoughtfulness and your kindness in presenting this to us tonight. This room and these chambers were very important to Gene and meant so much to him. I know that he was so grateful to be part of the city government. It was his way of giving back a small part of what San Marino had given and done for I know he would want to say good luck to each one of you all, and thanks to each of you. And I want to say myself and for our family, thank you all so much. Thank you.
Okay, would it be, would you like to come up here and have a picture with the seal in the background? Is that okay?
We won't even charge you, man.
Special for you.
Just her.
Oh, please.
Come on up. I want to make that trip close. I've got two.
It would be honored if you could point us like there. A whole band, yes. You guys can arrange yourselves.
I know what that's like. Here, one, two, and then three. And he's the extra. He's the extra. Hi, how are you?
You get a couple more?
Yeah.
You go through those here, okay? Is that good? Can we do it? Precious? Yes. Okay. We'll go back, up and down, back and down. No, 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 no. Where are you walking? Can you see it?
It'll be tough.
Is that okay? Is that okay?
Yep, that's great. Okay. You can look here first. One, two. And here again. One, two. Thank you. Here. One, two. And one, two. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Thank you. See what they may just do behind our things that are there.
Want to take your notes with you?
Oh, yeah. I see that, that, yeah. Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Excuse me. Can I have a minute?
Yes. Let's see what they're gonna do behind our things that are there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Want to take your notes with you?
Oh, yeah. I see that, that, yeah. Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Um. anything to the Drydens. Feel free, come on in.
Thank you. Very cheeky, I think. Good. See that? We all are. We all are. We're here.
All right, Mayor, just as a reminder, we're pulling item two, and we'll bring that back to you at a later meeting.
So we'll do a changing of the guard. If anybody's in the antechamber, feel free to come in. We have a few seats. Here. Nancy is raring, coming back? I just mean, we have some people might want to see. Okay, we do have a couple seats still, if anybody needs them. All right.
You're having a flashlight as well?
All right. Thank you so much for your patience, and as the city manager noted, Mr. Link wasn't able to be here tonight, so we're going to reschedule item number two. And also, before we move to the consent calendar, I'd like to move up item twenty-one, which has a recommendation for continuance, in order to be respectful of everybody's time. Is there any objection from council to handling the item out of order now? Seeing none, we'll have a staff report, and the public, if they wish, may speak to this, and then we will take our action. Thank you.
Thank you, Baron Counsel. Subsequent to the December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen council meeting, the property owner's attorney requested that the January eighth, two thousand and twenty public hearing on the matter be continued to the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty city council meeting. Staff and the applicant continue to research the issue related to the two parcels, as well as the covenant that's recorded with the L.A. County. And so pursuant to these, concerned staff, as well as the applicant, will need additional time to research that issue. So pursuant to the property owner's request, staff recommends that this de novo public hearing be opened, then continued to the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty city council meeting. Any open for questions?
Oh, one thing, just to follow up, did the applicant waive the rights that they have under, as far as the speed with which we can handle this issue?
Yes, the applicant, along with the associate with the letter to request to continue, has also waived their rights to the forty-day de novo hearing schedule.
Thank you. Any further, any questions?
About the council members?
What about the appellant? Does the appellant also have the forty-day right to request action within forty days?
Yes, but given the fact that the council is opening the public hearing tonight, then officially you have satisfied the requirement, you're just continuing it to a future date.
Okay. Has the appellant, in essence, consented? Have we talked to the appellant about this? I know there was some conversation.
We have. I've had a conversation with the appellant about this.
And they're okay with it being continued?
Well, actually, I want to leave the appellant to make a statement about that.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions from council members? Seeing none, who do we have as representatives from the applicant? Anybody here tonight? And from the appellant? Would you like to come and speak, please?
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, hopefully by now you know I'm Brett Cannon. I'm the appellant, and live at six four five South Allen, which is narrowly directly across from the applicant's property at six eighteen. Been a twenty-year resident, a proud resident of San Marino, and for all of our time here, we've lived within a stone's throw of Allen in California. While I stand in front of you this evening as one individual, I'm the appellant, and representing the interests of my neighbors, some of whom are here this evening, and some unfortunately who had either work or health conflicts. There are thirteen houses designated by the code we've lived within a stone's throw of Allen and California. While I stand in front of you this evening as one individual, I'm the appellant, and represent the interests of my neighbors, some of whom are here this evening, and some unfortunately who had either work or health conflicts. There are 13 houses designated by the code as relevant neighbors, one of whom is the applicant. Of the 12 remaining neighbors, nine signed a petition against this project, which is included in our application to appeal. That's 75% of the relevant neighbors are against this project, and it's that group among others who I represent this evening. As we were all made aware at the last meeting, and as Aldo lamented earlier, there is a document you have in your possession, a declaration of lot combination filed in 1977 by the Morrisons. I've read that declaration many, many times and believe its intent is extremely clear, to tie the lots as one single combined consolidated and integrated lot. However, I'm not aware, and I'll trust that our city attorney and our city council will conduct the appropriate due diligence to understand why this document surfaced so late in the process, and also to make a proper interpretation of said document in the best interests of the citizens of San Marino. I want to provide a brief history covering key points of this development path. At the first planning commission meeting on June 26, this project was unanimously shot down by the planning commission. Concerns regarding mass, centerline of mass, ceiling heights, awkward overhangs, front door size, insufficient details in terms of ironwork in windows, undersized landscape, setback of garage and house were all concerns, including a poorly maintained property. The list was long. The owner and architect invited neighbors to see the proposed changes on August 6, but to be clear, this was a presentation, and in no way did the architect seek feedback. In fact, neighbors were consistently concerned that the only material changes made to the project pertained to landscaping, as presented in bucolic renderings you've seen previously. When the architect was asked why architectural changes were not made, his reply was that the project adhered to code, and he did not need to make changes. For reasons unclear to me or my neighbors, at the planning commission meeting on August 28, the project was approved 4 to 1. This approval was made despite no changes to the house or the setbacks, or to address any of the aforementioned concerns of the planning commission. And hence, we are appealing the planning commission's decision. As I've said before, our main argument of our appeal is not based on an error made by the planning department when applying the planning code. This house is unique. It's a corner lot without a corner lot opposing it. Yet projects that are entirely code compliant can remain wholly inappropriate. Why? Because a city or any regulating body never intends to write a rule for every permutation of a potential issue that could be encountered. And San Marino's building code is no different, which is why our city formed the Design Review Committee and created residential design guidelines. The Design Review Committee was formed in 1989 due to development issues and projects that weren't fitting in the community, to stop construction of the homes that we all drive by today and ask ourselves, how the heck did that project get built? And we all know which houses those are. Then in 1999, the city council under Mayor Brown adopted the residential design guidelines. Those guidelines provide you, the city council, with the opportunity to use good judgment, to see through a home that is technically compliant but does not fit within the neighborhood, with a focus on neighborhood compatibility, site development, physical design, which is architecture, and landscaping. While this project has many attributes that rub against the grain of the four section of the design guidelines, and I have endless concerns with this home, I'll focus on two. First, and I'll be repetitive, pertains to neighborhood compatibility, and specifically the project's side yard setback on California. The residential design guidelines state, and I'll quote, "New structures should observe established front and side yard setbacks, and the pattern should be followed even if it's more restrictive than the zoning code," unquote. Every home on the south side of California has a minimum of a 50-foot setback. The average of the homes on the south side of California are 54 feet. I know because I personally measured them. The California-facing side yard setback for this property, both the garage and the house, is 25 feet. That's less than half of the setbacks of all the other homes on the south side of California. When viewing a lot today, the impact of this setback is conveniently masked. The worn flag story poles on the property are difficult to see because they're hidden behind a 12-foot hedge that won't exist when this garage or house is built. To be clear, this garage could physically sit in the front yard of every home on the south side of California. How can this possibly be viewed as compatible in the neighborhood? It's certainly not respectful of observing established setbacks. The second issue pertains to physical design components, also known as architecture. In the past, I raised concerns about incompatible windows, ironworks dot co, inappropriate posts supporting overhangs, sometimes confusing. Tonight, I'm going to focus on something that's very simple and straightforward, and that's the front door. The proposed front door height is eight feet. It's definitely not consistent with front doors in the neighborhood. The residential design guidelines call out oversized doors as an issue, and state further, and I quote, "Smaller entries help create a more human scale to a home and are strongly encouraged," unquote. So let's look at the door heights in this neighborhood. On the south side of California, between Allen and San Marino, there are 13 homes, 11 Spanish and two ranch. The average door height of those homes is 6 feet 10 inches. There are six homes on Allen, between California and Lombardi, and the average door heights are 6 feet 8 inches. The defined neighborhood group of 12 homes average 6 feet 10 inches. There's only one home in this group that has a door height taller than seven feet, let alone eight feet, and that's at 1905 Lombardi, and it's nearly a 9,000-square-foot home on 1.1 acres. How do I know these door measurements? Well, because once again, I personally measured every door, and somewhere John Contra is here, so I apologize for the few pointy doorbell triggers that I certainly alerted. But look, all joking aside, and to be clear, reducing the front door height alone doesn't cure the poor architecture design. It's just one example of why this home is not architecturally appropriate. Council members, I trust you appreciate your role this evening to determine if this home is compatible in our neighborhood. You have the compass, it's the residential design guidelines. You have many arguments from neighbors that have spoken previous meetings, from emails and letters, and you have a precedent with our established neighborhood. It's defined by 100-year-old architecture designed by Wallace Smith, George Washington Smith, Everett Fitzbavco, Marston Van Pelt, Harold B. Fisner, and Reginald Johnson. Each of these are among early 20th century's most noteworthy Spanish Revival architects. It's this high quality, unique Spanish Revival architecture that was one of the key reasons each of us moved to this neighborhood. The bar for a home to fit in this neighborhood has to be high. And the location of this neighborhood, and in particular, this corner, is also one of the most important in our community. It stands as a gateway to one of our gems, which is the Huntington Library. Forty thousand visitors per year visit to Huntington Library, and nearly everyone will pass by this corner twice. Finally, I appreciate your time. In my view, the architect and homeowner have rubbed against the grain of all of our design principles. Their project is not fitting for this iconic neighborhood. The guidelines state, and I quote, "That applicants should not assume that a project will be approved merely by adhering to the city's minimum zoning development regulations," unquote. And I don't believe such an assumption should be made today.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Do we have any other appellant comments at this time? Public comments? Can I see by show hand? I'm just trying to see how many people are going to speak on this. I'm trying to get a sense of how many. Two? Okay. Three? All right. Then we'll allow three minutes apiece, and when you please wrap up when you hear the warning sound from our city clerk. Thank you. Can you state your name and address?
I'm Eddie Namos. I live at 665 Allen Avenue. My family has lived there for 47 years. I myself have lived in San Marino for 53 years. I've watched the changes over the years in San Marino, and I find them extremely disturbing. Allen Avenue has been spared the ravages of developers because there was nothing to develop. And now suddenly, this project came up, which is, as Brett stated, incongruous, incompatible, inharmonious with the rest of the neighborhood. But I want to go back to the planning committee meeting because I found it very detrullating. The committee originally stated that we needed a very high bar for any house built on Allen Avenue, which Brett already stated. That's what they stated at the first meeting. Then, the subsequent meeting, after we saw the, you know, non-existent architectural changes, they did a 180 turn, change of mind for no reason, which was extremely provocative, suspect, and a complete collapse of obligation and responsibility to protecting the historic part of our city. So I won't go over that Allen Avenue is a magnificent street with understated and elegant homes. This is empirical evidence. It is there. We can all see it. But I do, I do, I do want to say that this isn't, there's no room for gray in this decision. This is black and white. This is going to determine, this is going to determine what's going to happen to the other historical streets in San Marino. Are they going to be? I mean, it's, I'm sorry. I'm not, I don't want to condemn or torment our neighbors who have probably been conned or misled in some way, or criticize the architect who was limited by the space. And, ah, is that me? I didn't know I had such a big palate. Anyhow, I certainly hope you, you serve to greater good and fully guess this project. Thank you very much.
We have another speaker?
Hold on for just a second. Sitting clerk, please. It's okay?
And I have one question for staff. We were not furnished with the document that the appellant referred to. It's not in our notebook tonight. Is that something that is in your possession?
It was, I don't know if it was a main part of the record.
No, we don't. It's part of the record, but we don't. We didn't, we expect that this was going to be continued if we were to provide more information about it.
Okay. At the break, can we get copies of this so all of us may see this? Because... Hey, we haven't seen it. It's not in this notebook, so I wanted to get that and make sure that all the council knows what you were referring to, since there is a document that you submitted, and I appreciate that. Please go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Nick Demolos. I'm representing my parents, Andy and Elizabeth Demolos. We're directly adjacent to the Development and Questions. We moved here in 1983 to escape the mean streets of Chapel Woods, and it's been the best thing we've ever done, like that, for moving us here, because we can always rely on Ceremonia to do the right thing. And this is the only city, I think, that I've been aware that's the case. Also, I'd like to thank Aldo first time. Aldo, we bombard you with calls and emails that you get back to us. You're very professional. Just too bad we have the conflict of planning versus design review. You didn't give 95% of design review without including the planning, so your job is very hard. Thank you for being so kind of us. So in respect to the setback, I'd like to talk about a different aspect of the setback. I have a picture. The first picture is, the first three pictures are basically, the first one is our block, the block in question, and the other two are the rest of the blocks, Land Or Lane to San Gabriel. There is one block in the northern border of San Marino where one person sticks out and doesn't conform to the setback that everybody else has. If this development happens, this will be the only house in the northern border of San Marino that does not conform to a setback with the rest. Whatever the setback is, they conform. And a perfect example, there's two perfect examples of houses that conform. That's 615 Allen and 615 San Marino. The old Dr. Dobbin's house across on Allen, and then the house in San Marino and California. Both of those houses are corner houses with side yards on California, much like the development in question. They adhere to the 50 yards, 50-foot setback. So those are two perfect examples of what this house should look like. They're not a plan. The second one I want to make is about improper site, improper, the design review guidelines. Sorry about that, folks.
That's okay. There will be potentially another opportunity, so if you would like to make some remarks today, but wait a second. Or you can submit them also by email for your thoughts.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. And we have a third speaker, I believe. Director Savantes, did you also get a handout? Okay. We have extras here.
My name is Chris DeWitt. I live at 1779 Lombardi. I don't really have anything else to add. I think it was communicated really clearly, but we both talked down the field about the neighborhood. I did send an email a few months ago to you guys, but I just wanted to put it here. We just had questions who want to talk to people and to show support, because this is something that we've particularly, Brett, all this has been a lot of time talking about and, so I think.
Thank you. Are there any other people wishing to speak about this? If not, we'll sit. Do we have any questions or discussions?
It's, well, the way I see it, this is a two-step analysis for us at the present. Number one, can a house be built there in any condition, given the evidence presented regarding what was reported with the Los Angeles County? And I appreciate our need to confirm in fact that that's a real document. I have no doubt that it is, but I understand there are requirements when we do so. So we don't even address the concerns that the neighbors have with respect to this property. In fact, we go back to the first step, and that is, can they build their period, regardless of what they build? I would like to apologize to the appellants that we have not been able to confirm that yet, but with the holidays and down the staff members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other people wishing to speak about this? Not more. Okay. Um, do we have any, uh, questions or discussions?
It's, well, the way I see it, this, this is a two-step analysis for us at the present. Number one, can a house be built there in any condition, given the, uh, the evidence presented regarding what was reported with the, uh, Los Angeles County? And I appreciate our need to confirm, in fact, that that's a real document. I have no doubt that it is, but I understand there are requirements when we do so. So we don't even address the concerns that the neighbors have with respect to this property. In fact, we go back to the first step, and that is, can they build their period, regardless of what they build? I'm, I would like to apologize to the appellants that we have not been able to confirm that yet, but with the holidays, um, and, and we're down a staff member and planning, uh, some things get pushed back, and, and we appreciate your patience. But the easiest way to solve this from the beginning, so that you, you don't have to come here and make an argument about why it shouldn't be built, is if, in fact, they couldn't have put anything there. And I, I, I would hope you, I appreciate your patience and why we resolve this. Um, and, yeah, I know that the appellant, not the appellant, the applicant, wanted to do a title report. Title report doesn't mean anything, if it's not a title report, when he built it, then he's got a lawsuit against the title company. Um, it has nothing to do with us. So let's get this confirmed as quickly as possible, and that way, we could go back and say, you can't do what you're doing here. And for some reason, you didn't know about this, it's not our fault, sorry.
Other lawsuits?
Well, no, I mean, if that's, it, that's a lawsuit to her involved.
Do we have any other further comments from council members or vice chairman? Alright, seeing that, I, I will, um, right, consider the motion to continue, uh, does anybody who?
Can I ask one more question? What is it that we're waiting for? Um, are we waiting for a certified copy of this?
We were also looking into the city's records, because it appears that this may have, um, come up in connection with, uh, an application to the city to approve the tennis court back in the, back in nineteen seventy-seven. So we're continuing to just get into the files and try to understand exactly what happened with that.
Okay, one suggestion you may want to address with the, the, uh, the Los Angeles County clerk to get a certified copy. Uh, not that this copy isn't valid, but just to make certain, there should be a certified copy in record. Um, and, so we're looking to determine whether or not this was made in connection with the, regardless of why it was made, why is that?
Doesn't matter.
If, if it's a document that's filed, it's, it was a, a right given up by a previous property owner to combine the, to combine those lots, then that's a done deal for me.
We just want to make sure that the council had all the information that was all of them.
Okay. I hope we informationizing you.
Yeah, I also think that this does have things, um, as stating it's a recorded document with the stamp of, of everybody now. If you want an official one or to confirm that some subsequent action wasn't taken, but I believe, uh, that that's an offer of a perfectly fine thing, and we're not going to find it in our records here. Um, so it's only validating that this is, is in fact a legitimate copy.
And make sure there's no subsequent document.
Right. So, once we confirm that, but I think that this should be easily handable, determined, um, by our next council meeting, and then we can put an end to it, because I do think it's unfair for residents to keep coming out. Um, we have an applicant who doesn't show up, and yet we have appellants and neighbors who are very concerned about this project, who are making significant issues, even with the design of the project, beyond the lot, and they've come here repeatedly. So at some point, um, I think that this needs to be an urgency on our part, so that this doesn't drag on anymore, and we are, can then act in a manner to determine the outcome of the places that are next here. Um, so I would hope also that we have all documents that are submitted, including that, because we did not get it, we didn't get a full packet this time. And that's a bit disconcerting from our perspective, even though, to continue, this is an important issue that we should be aware of, um, and was submitted to the city. So, do I have, um?
Is it possible to, to have this document by the next meeting?
Of course.
Okay, so then we only need to continue to the end of January.
Oh, I'm sorry, should be, uh, should, they requested until the February council meeting, just wondering if they did want to have a public hearing.
It's, it's, it's tough to get neighbors
During the workday. That's right, it's a morning meeting. My apologies. May I ask, um, is there an issue with appellants, um, in terms of continuing to our next evening's city council meeting? That's what was, I'm sorry, February twelve. So it will be a Valentine's Day present.
In my life, that doesn't matter so much anymore, so, okay. I'm calling your boy right now. I'm happy to come here next month, but I would just ask the council to reduce what seems to be a bit of a prejudice to favor, not favor, probably the wrong word, to encourage neighbors to show up as warm bodies. This is the fourth meeting that we've asked neighbors to attend. Helen Lamros, who is in her late nineties, has attended three of these. We have a number of neighbors who have businesses that involve travel every week. We had two more meetings we were asked to attend that were canceled right before the meeting. That's six meetings in a very short period of time. So I don't mind if it's continued, because ideally, I'd like the council to have an opinion on the lot combination, declaration of lot combination, and that puts this issue to bed. So I'm happy to get to that right answer, but I would just ask that you don't look for the attendance from the neighbors one more time.
I do.
You can go back to the voice recordings, you can read the emails, you can read the letters. I feel like you have sufficient information, and it's been consistent from our side the entire time. So that's all I would ask.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Motion of the hearing? Okay, so. I move to continue the public hearing to February twelfth, twenty twenty, city council meeting. Do you want to do a roll call? Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Levy?
Yes.
Mayor Shaver Romi?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For everybody that came and spoke, we appreciate it. Alright, we are turning back to the consent calendar. Uh, does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Sure.
A second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Levy?
Yes.
Mayor Shaver Romi?
Yes.
Thank you so much, the council, the second calendar approved. Uh, next we have the treasures reports. Good news. I know Annie's here. Mass exodus. Thank you very much, Old Mill, foundation.
Very important shorts.
Alright, thank you very much, Treasure Hunt. Would you like to proceed? I appreciate it. We might have some more people coming in or out, but I think.
Mayor?
Yes.
As mayor of council members? As of the end of November, total portfolio, we have altogether twenty-six million twenty-six million, nine hundred thirty-three thousand, and two hundred and ninety dollars. Out of which, we have about two thousand in bank checking accounts. We have two point eight nine seven in other bank accounts. I'm sorry, the first one is two thousand in petty cash, and two thousand eight ninety-seven in checking accounts, and ten thou, uh, ten million, four hundred and thirty-three million, uh, four hundred thirty-three thousand in money market account. And we have a little over eight million in LIF, three point seven in CDs, one point seven five in bonds.
Just so the record, it's two point eight nine million in cash and banking and checking.
Two point eight, two million, eight hundred ninety-seven.
Yeah, we said checking.
Yes, sorry, sorry. And those are in different checking accounts. The interest rate for money market account for November was two point three one percent. LIF were yielding two point one, which is a little bit lower. CD is at one point nine three percent, and bond is at one point six seven. As of the end of November, the total combined portfolio yield is two point one six percent. The interest rate for, the deposit interest rate is still increasing, and so far, short-term rate is higher than long-term. So the negotiated interest rate in our money market account is performing better than if we put money away in long-term. And as of the end of November, the twenty-six million dollar in our portfolio is a little bit lower than our October total portfolio, is because of several major projects. We have road, um, improvement, we have three payrolls, and also, we have sidewalk project. So that took about a million dollar to pay for those different projects. And, um, we have five approved investment firms, and we will be, Paul Chung, our new finance director, and I will be meeting three of the investment counselors in January and February, and we will be meeting the other two before the end of the first quarter of two thousand and twenty. And this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Treasure Hunt. Uh, Councilmember Wong, do you have any, Councilmember Wong, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Tal?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions.
Thank you for doing the fun.
Vice Mayor you?
Thank you for your work, appreciate it.
Thank you, and happy new year, Treasure Hunt. So the report will be received and filed. Can I have a motion?
I motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, next we have item twelve, consideration of three options related to the construction of Lacy Park Rose Arbor, including awarding a construction agreement in the amount of six forty-eight, three, seven, zero, and appropriating four hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars from the capital improvement fund reserves, rejecting all bids and re-advertising, or rejecting all bids and seeking additional funding. And the staff report director.
Thank you, Mayor Shaver Romi. Uh, replacing the iconic Rose Arbor at Lacy Park is one of the city council's priority initiatives for the Parks and Public Works Department. Last January, you directed me to proceed ahead with designing a historically faithful replica of the arbor. The council at the time appropriated twenty thousand dollars for engineering, and between my engineering time and that of a structural engineer hired to design the structural connections, we spent just under five thousand dollars to prepare the bid documents. The design was completed in October, and the department began the bidding process. Because of our recent experience with building contractors, Elspire and Lacy Park, the department, with assistance from the city attorney's office, used a pre-qualification process to vet potential contractors based on their record of responsibly managing public works, construction projects. After a thirty-day period during which we received pre-qualification documents from five contractors, we determined that two were eligible to bid on the project. Those two contractors, Quartz Construction Company of Glendora, was down to be the low bidder. The low bid did exceed our June estimate, because our historically faithful nineteen thirties Rose Arbor had to be constructed to comply with Twenty-First Century Seismic Building Codes. The department recommends the council also approve the inclusion of the pathway lighting, which was part of the original arbor, and which would complete our faithfulness to its reconstruction. If the council approves tonight moving forward with construction, we are planning to have it completed this Au, this coming August. However, before we can start construction, the issue of funding has to be resolved. As indicated in the department's report, the cost of the construction inspection in a five percent contingency is six hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. The city council has currently included two hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred of funding in the capital improvement fund. We learned last week that the Rotary Club of San Marino has pledged fifty thousand dollars toward the project. We learned just yesterday from a community member of their very generous support in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the project. Subtracting the current appropriation and the two pledges from the six hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-dollar total project cost, the remaining budget gap is two hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety. The city manager's office received notice two weeks ago of an offer of two hundred fifty thousand dollars in financial assistance from Supervisor Bartra. This two hundred fifty thousand dollars of funding is Los Angeles County Proposition A park bond money. These funds, however, would require the city to discontinue the weekend park entry fee for non-residents. Our finance department has reported to me that the annual revenue collected from their non-resident entry fee is approximately sixty thousand dollars per year. If the city were to accept the Prop, the Proposition A funds, the project would be fully funded, and no additional capital funding would be required from the city. However, in light of the Proposition A restrictions, it is our recommendation that the city council not accept the Proposition, Proposition A funds being offered. As this is a straightforward city council priority initiative, and we are ready to get the Rose Arbor constructed this year, the city manager and I are recommending option one listed in the staff report, with a minor change through the last motion, to budget for the two hundred fifty thousand dollars of community donation, and, and instead reject the Proposition A funding. This concludes the department's presentation.
Thank you very much, Director Thron, and I really compliment you on the efforts that you put into this. Thank you. Uh, do we have questions, Councilmember Wong?
Just have a, I have a question about Proposition A Fund Twenty. Is that one-time deal or any of?
That is a one-time funding, from excess funds that the supervisor has available, available at her discretion.
Thanks.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Thank you. Two questions. Um, so with the propay money, that would mean that the conditions would remain in perpetuity, correct?
That is correct.
And my other que, uh, question, you had made a last sentence with the amendment. Can you read that last sentence one more time?
Um, certainly, the, the last motion of option one
Yes.
would basically change the account number that's shown to the, um, Lacy Park Rose Arbor donation account. Um, if you like that number, I'd certainly read that to you.
Well, we'll need it when?
You'll, you'll need it when you get to the rest of the sheet.
So that's the change?
That is the only change that we are recommending.
Thank you. Councilmember Tal?
We get other propay money, our building?
We get, um, maintenance money for Proposition A, which we very discreetly spend on the thinner house.
And the thinner house is outside the park?
It is inside the park, but it is outside the locked boundaries of the park, where we charge admission.
If we were to move the fence that sits in front of the arbor, are we going to be able to say that's outside the park, too?
You would, um, have to have, um, during the weekends, that gate that would then separate the two places would have to be locked.
It's locked now, on the weekends.
No, he's saying, if you put in another gate, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. I know what you're saying, sir.
I had the same, I got mine, honestly.
No, no, let me make this, I'm just suggesting, move the whole thing. Move the fence, so that the, you know, for years and years and years and years and years, I think, was on fence. It was fenced in, like, the mid-seventies. And so, that existed without a fence around the entire park. What I'm suggesting is, if we move the fence that presently sits between the arbor and St. Albans, uh, back to
The park side.
The park side, would we fall under the same discreet exemption?
Uh, we would be able to use the same argument that we use for the thinner house, that it is, um, open to the public, because on the St. Albans side, there would be no gate across it.
Right.
It would never be locked, and that is an option.
Or there's a gate there and during the weekends, there's a second gate to get into the park. Because right now, the thirner house is behind a lock gate in nighttime hours.
For nighttime hours, yes.
So it could be not removing that gate, but just add another one. And weekends, just unlock the other.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's a reasonable reason for that.
The, I've had a discussion with the city attorney on this. And the safest action would actually be to separate the parcels. The Lacy Park Rose Arbor is actually, its original parcel was, it was a buildable lot way back in the day. You could go through a map back process where you would make that a discrete parcel. Then that would make it definitely clear that it's a separate parcel. You would still have to have a gate in between the two because you're going to be charging admission from the main part of the park. If you were going to do that exercise, you would probably want to do that for the thirner house as well so that you've also created another discrete parcel. That makes it very clear that that parcel is totally isolated from the park and there would be no bleeding of potential expenditures from one to the other. It would make the accounting for Proposition A probably cleaner. But we've had no issues with Proposition A with the thirner house the way we've operated it for years.
So can you, how can you find out?
I'll tell you, I'm very good.
I speak to the supervisor.
Well, it's very, it's very clear in the rules of Proposition A that you cannot restrict access. It must be open in perpetuity. The way we're doing it now is informal. We don't do anything to upset that, then it stays informal. And unless it becomes a problem, then you would have an issue there as it relates to the Proposition A expenditure.
If you don't think it's going to work, then, you know, then we shouldn't do it. But, I mean, I don't want to play political games with propay money. If there's a rule there that allows us to take the $250,000 propay money and make it a separate thing, and that way, it's the type of other money that we're looking for without strings attached. I mean, there is a string attached to this one that we have to add, open to the public, but it would be open to the public and we fit their definition.
It would be very clean if you did in fact move the fence, even though it's still part of the complete parcel.
Or add a gate. Add a gate on the park side to restrict access.
While, on the weekends, while the park is being used, having the admission fee.
Can we hear from our councilman?
Yeah, I think we need, you need a city attorney. Could you weigh in?
It's certainly cleaner either to do a lot split as Director Hahn has discussed because it's not just the county that could have an issue. Anyone listening to this commentary or anybody, anyone could file a lawsuit saying we're using misuse of Proposition A funds under the current circumstances without having a discrete division of property as well as, that's the market case, the property where the Rose Arbor is located from the remainder of the park.
Okay, well, we need to, any other questions? Then we can discuss this, but do we have more questions?
Yeah, I can ask you a slightly like question, which is, does it really need to be engineered this stuff? I think I saw somewhere that the, this engineering costs a couple hundred thousand more to make it into a surprise in 9.83.
Oh, that was the exact same question I asked our esteemed building official. And he said, well, if you want a building permit. Which I believe he probably says that to many private developers here in town. If you want a building permit.
Just another permit.
Just another permit.
What is a permit?
We do not charge ourselves for the permit.
But I, it was $2,000 of a jump in cost over just the $200,000 additional. Because of that seismic, I'm going to say, not retrofit, the seismic fitting has to be much greater. And I do think perhaps that influenced both who bid the project because it became people who have to have that ability in part, which is in somebody who maybe has a lumber company or things like that because the seismic requirements that they would have to put in foundation-wide now becomes a much grander project, for lack of a better word, much more architecturally demanding than it was originally envisioned, which was rebuilding the Rose Arbor, which didn't have that type of thing, which applies to fittings, foundations, all the way through in the end. So I do think there is a great deal of sticker shock, but I appreciate that it will be something that will stand. So the community can stand under the Rose Arbor and be safe. And I think if we are building something, whether it's the playground, I assume, or anything else at Lacy Park, that we should be respecting the present codes because that is our responsibility as a city. But I think somehow that got lost in the translation, maybe because the numbers were released to the community. And I know you said it, but I don't think it was really clear that a lot of that is because of that additional loss. And that really has driven up the price. My question is, is it possible to do it, it saves a small amount, but at the same time is the light issue? I don't think, as far as, I've lived here since the late '90s, and I know that there are neighbors surrounding the park and homes that are right next to it. And I don't know also whether the community and the neighbors are aware of the lighting issue being added back in because it hasn't been there for a very long time. It might have, as you said, at some point been lit, the path lights, but they're certainly were not operative in the last 10-plus years, nor do we use Lacy Park at night. And I don't think we really would leave the lights on, so to speak, because then that becomes a neighborhood issue and maybe an attractive nuisance or whatever. And there was quite a bit when, if I recall, the tennis courts were lit or not lit and that became important for a lot of the neighbors in the area. So if, if there's a consensus among councilmember, would that change? Obviously, it would reduce the price, but can we still accept a bid without lighting and just adjust, or remove that, sorry, remove that piece?
You certainly have the discretion. It's an additive, additive item of a little bit over $23,000. As I understand how the lighting operated in the past, it was used very infrequently typically during the solitary nighttime event that we had at the Fourth of July. My intent was to deliver to you the historically accurate arbor, even knowing that because you, the council hasn't mentioned the lighting before. And so I wanted at least to get, have the effort to see what the cost would be. And that cost actually did fit within the estimate.
That was one thing.
One of two, I guess.
All right, so we can discuss that, but I just was curious as to whether that would make, because I do not know the bidding process, if that would affect it. But it could be add, it could be left in or taken out, depending on the consensus of the council.
The way the bid was structured, that was an additive item, which I can adjust.
What do you think the useful life will be?
Well, it's certainly going to be more than 20 years. And the reason why I say that is the very stout connections that we had designed are much more substantial to what was there. What was there originally was basically beams and planks sitting on top of other beams and planks. And so there were many instances where just because of its original design, water and vegetation would be caught in nooks of things and start to rot out the wood, which would start to age prematurely. So the brace connections are not only going to be seismic, but we're also going to be covering those notches with copper so as to keep, copper flashing to keep those nooks from collecting water and vegetated material, as well as the tops of all the beams are going to be covered as well. You won't be, you won't see it from ground level, but that will keep that vegetative material from wearing, from eroding the top bit. So we should get a lot more years out of it. Also with the connections, because it's almost sort of a kid's construction set is you can unplug the wood members and plug them back into the steel, the steel connections. And those steel connections are, as I mentioned, are very, very well-designed. And they're going to last quite significantly longer than the 20s.
What do you anticipate an annual maintenance requirement?
Oh, you know, that was a really excellent question that we talked about back in June. I don't remember what it is. But it was certainly more than the steel option, which is why we recommended the steel option. But I think it was second place. I don't, I'm not going to guess what it was.
And it would have to be painted, what, every seven years?
There was a five-year maintenance schedule of repainting. And we did create a sample budget for that. And that would be something that if we go with this project, we will roll that into this coming fiscal year's budget so we can start programming not only its long-term maintenance, but also its sinking fund for its ultimate maybe larger replacement or larger renovation 20 years.
When would you initiate or imagine the initial maintenance beginning? Would it be at that five-year painting or before that?
You would start a year after the warranty period is over, which would be two years after construction is completed. So that's almost your basic version.
Do you know what the $60,000 a year that we get from the non-resident UDs, does that just go into the general fund or does it go into the Lacy Park maintenance fund?
It goes into the general.
I'm wondering if we don't want to hear Mark, those funds go into the Lacy Park maintenance fund for all of Lacy Park, thinking about the bigger issue of maintenance of this arbor and when it's constructed and irrigation costs and all that others.
I believe certainly something that Finance Director and I can work on and bring to you during your budget process.
And I have one remaining question or two, I think, but one had to do with the irrigation. So in this, this is just a construction bid, obviously, and we need to consider the landscaping after, namely the plant materials, what can be preserved and what needs to be replaced and what's there, as well as irrigation. Are those things, neither one of those are covered with any of this?
That is correct. The irrigation is currently covered under our operations budget, and all of that was new perhaps about a decade ago. And the Parks and Ground staff have been maintaining that, as well as the declining roses, which are now more bushes than climbing roses. They've taken care of them very carefully over the last three years. So then when this project is completed, they'll go back. They're, they've been very diligent, faithful at preserving that landscape that was designed 20 years ago.
My only thought, though, is that we make a plan for what point, if you are doing concrete or foundational work, we need to reassess the irrigation when it's open, so to speak, or when that area, you have easy access and just confirm that the prior fittings are all still in existence. And so to build that in perhaps into that, is that doable? I don't know if you have a critical path. I haven't seen actually any document about the timeline for different steps of the construction. I'm sure such a document exists.
That would be a task that would fall onto the maintenance division, the Public Works, to make sure of that. We've got a fairly robust specification about protecting all the plant material as part of our standard specifications. Anything that's damaged by the contractor as part of their operations, they have to replace. So we will be there every day making sure that the plants and irrigation all continues. That did come up during our pre-construction meet, our pre-bid meetings with the contractors, because they were all very hesitant. They were worried because you're going to be building right in the middle of all of these very significant rose plants. And so we already have a plan in place to protect them, and that is included in the specification.
And the last question is, there's so concerns about that there's just two bids in terms of, and I thought that there was a third. I don't know what happened in the bid process. And if you can just enlighten me as to why we were left with just two bids?
So in the pre-qualification process, we had a 30-day process where contractors were invited to complete a very detailed questionnaire as to their abilities to responsibly manage public works. We had five firms submit by the due date. And we went through the selection process based on the state's guidelines as this is how we do it. We use the state's model pre-qualification process. We did not have to invent anything in a year that the state, the state published it. They published it back in 1999 and have been using it. It's very legally robust. We had originally three that we thought were deemed qualified. However, upon looking at one of them, they made the fatal error of not coming to the mandatory pre-bid meeting. So my not coming to that was one of the fatal flaws, that if you didn't attend the mandatory meeting, even though you might meet the pre-qualification paperwork, you also needed to show up and show your face and sign in on the sheet. So unfortunately, they were not, we had to disqualify them in order for it to be there for everyone. In a pre-qualification process, because you are seeking responsible contractors, it does winnow out a lot of contractors. And a lot of contractors are not interested in sharing with the government any of their financial information. Many of them do not want to be registered with the Department of Industrial Relations, which is a requirement, and they don't want to go there. If they're going to compete in general with everyone else, they might have a pickup truck. They're more comfortable doing that. Once you start to make it a very select group, you then wind up with less eligible bachelors.
And so that's how it really came down to, too. So there were three who were interested, but one had missed the meeting.
We had five.
Well, five originally.
Five, and ultimately, we had three that for a variety of reasons were disqualified. The two that did bid, they followed exactly like they did. Our construction obviously came in a very healthy $900,000, but they obviously were not promoted.
Thank you. Are there any other questions to the councilmembers?
Yes, I have another question. What's the estimate time of construction?
We have, we have prescribed 120 working days, which means if we get started in February, they will be done in August.
Any fines, even finish by that time?
Liquidated damages is our general tool to go to. It's $250 a day for each day past the approved completion date, which I'm sure you'll hear about it in a future item coming your way.
My question about that is, do we have to do 250 or can we increase that to make it a little bit more of an incentive because clearly it has not worked?
Well, it's a, it's a disincentive for failure to perform. Liquidated damages are a very tricky amount to create and enforce. We use $250 because in LA County, the standard specifications we use that all the other agencies use, that's been the generally accepted cost of damage for an agency to maintain managing the project on a daily basis. So that will cover your overhead, have an inspector standing around or staff standing around. Anything more than that, you have to go through a very rigorous calculation process that if you inflict it on someone, it better be right because the contractor that you're charging it to, they have very good lawyers and they will challenge every single line of that. So unless it's something very significant such as
A restroom?
Even more significant than a restroom. Say you have environmental window that you absolutely have to be completed or else you will be subject to regulatory fines in the neighborhood of $1,000 a day. That then could be your nexus for their failure to complete on time. But if you don't have something like that, it becomes, you can see your city attorney is all going, eh, it's not a good idea to do.
And we're down to two suitors, so we really don't want to be with one. If we were to make any changes, that would make it more difficult.
Well, you would not be able to make a change in liquidated damages at this point. The only way to do that is you'd have to reject all bids and re-advertising.
All right, any other questions?
I have one more, just to get the math correct. We have $200,000 from a donation, an additional $50,000, $25,000, which has already been committed, and $25,000 of which will be today. So we have $250,000.
From community donations.
From community donations. Okay, which changes the math, but that's fine. Just trying to figure that out. So in essence, the way I figure it, assuming for purpose of argument, we don't take we don't take the Prop. A money and we get rid of the additive item of lighting. It appears the total amount that would be required for additional funding would be $206,710.
But I'd like to comment on that lighting issue. It's 3.5% of the cost. And here we are today, making this decision. For councils to come in the next 10 or 15 years, the needs of the community might change. And for so little money relative to the cost of a whole contract, I just think it would be penny wise to be pound foolish, but that's my thought.
We could discuss it.
I did have one correction to your report. It said that it had been removed in 2017, and I believe it was taken down in 2016. We were elected in 2017, and I know it was already gone.
It was such a great year, 2017, for me.
That stuck in your mind. I know.
Stuck in my mind. I came here, it was already gone.
So anyway, I'm just saying if we should...
Yes, thank you for that.
...find some people's private information. All right. Any other?
Director, I did manage to find the staff report from last year if it would answer a question the Councilmember or Vice Mayor wanted. I don't know where to find it. I have pulled up a few.
About maintenance costs?
I did locate the staff report. So if there's perhaps public comments you may want to look at, we'd be able to have that answered.
Thank you. Do we have any, I'm now opening this to public comment. Would anybody like to speak to this board or opposition? Any other questions? Sign up. Discuss, all right. Councilmember Talt?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of this project. And it is something that a pretty substantial number of members of our community would support as well. The only question that remains for me is whether or not to accept the Prop. A grant money. But since it does have conditions and I can't be 100% certain that we will not be able to continue to charge on weekends, which would be a loss of $60,000 annually, I would be in support of using our reserves in a way that benefits the community in this regard. So it would be the previously adopted City Capitol Improvement Fund of $215,000 outside donations of $250,000. And then between $229,000 and $206,000 of what the additional funding would be. I do want to talk about the lights. It's, if they're unnecessary, they're more of a problem in continuing maintenance and with the neighbors than there's any benefit for it. So it's not just the 3% issue. It's the fact that we don't need it. We might as well not spend that money on it, increase our annual maintenance costs as a result. So I would be for reducing the overall down base bid to $625,000 plus the 5% contingency and fund it through our own funds rather than the county tell us what we can and cannot do our part.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I can support Option 1.
All right. Simple, direct, straightforward, cut to the chase. Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, somewhat similarly, if we are to consider the Prop. A money at all, I would want to continue a decision to get a full analysis of what that offset would be. There would be quite a few issues involved. We would certainly have a lot more people coming to enjoy the beautiful park, which would impact parking and maintenance and the like. So if it were to be considered, I would want the matter continued. As we know, when we work with tennis courts and the like, we certainly work with low-impact lighting. And I have talked to a number of people who have enjoyed walking over to the Rose Arbor in the summer. So I still like the idea of keeping it with its original budget.
Vice Mayor Udi?
I would love to take Catherine Garg's 250, but not at the risk of anything in perpetuity. So if there would be a lock solid grant that were not to be anything in perpetuity, we could consider it. You know, the 250 versus the $60,000, it's a four-year payback. So that's just not a number really to worry about. Unlike Mr. Talt, I do like outdoor lighting. I think it would really enhance the beauty of this structure. It is, when done well, all voltage outdoor lighting is not a distance to the neighbors. I would enhance the beauty of the arbor, and it also would enhance public safety.
I am so thrilled to get this built. I would take just about any money. However, for the sake of our community, I feel strongly that accepting Prop. A money in this regard is a bad decision for us as a community. And I do respect what my colleagues have said about the usage of the park, the cost. We would actually be losing money. It's not a significant amount. Some in terms of we would already in four years, just with our current system, have covered that amount. So, and I think it's time that we act on the vast requests from our community and right a wrong that was done in taking the original arbor down. Present staff was not involved in that, and I appreciate that. But I do think it was an action that became as a shock to many instead of maintaining the old one or trying to do that. And so I think we need to right the wrong. And if we have to spend some infrastructure money, this is something that will last long term. We've made efforts to do so. It will definitely withstand any earthquakes. So we got that covered. And we've done everything that we could think of to make it a long-term investment by our city that's overdue. I also think it was a jewel of our city, and I'm anxious to see it back. So I hate to see a further delay as we investigate, for example, the property issue and separating the lot and what's the legal issue involved in that and how much of that, to me, seems again for not an insignificant sum, but not a sum that we can't handle and we should cover just as a matter of principle. I don't think we should expend more time, lose these bids or the particular controlling bid that we're deciding on tonight. Also, I think that we've had great generous donations for us to get it built. And I'm thrilled that members of our community have come forward already. I think that we will have more money and donations. And I know that we've spoken about this among, with Councilmember Jacobowski, that we would like to encourage an event at the start of the demolition, if you will, that we can invite community groups such as the garden clubs. There are several who have already come forward and said they would like to make and add to the capital. And whether that goes toward the maintenance fund or some other shortcoming that we don't think of at this time, I think we really should encourage. I think there are people in the community, along with our bronze plaque families, which should be invited, that would like to be part of this process. And I think that that also will help raise more funds in the long run, which will maintain it. And we could start that, and that's a positive thing just for that. So since we have already a designated fund, I would like to encourage staff to explore that if other council members are in agreement. And the last point I wanted to make is, I think that we need to be respectful of the donations and the work that's been done to remedy a past wrong and move forward with it. So I do think time is of the essence. So I would move forward, support moving forward with this bid. Personally, I do not support lights being there. I think that the cost, the benefit is marginal because we don't use the park at night except for once a year. And nobody goes up the arbor at that time, or do they? I'm not quite sure. So I can see then it's useful one night a year. I don't know if that is something that the majority of the council wants to include or not. I think we heard from three. I don't know if Councilmember Wong has a strong opinion on what might be wrong about the light issue.
I move to keep the lights in because they will enhance the beauty of the arbor in the long term.
I would survey the neighbors first to see if there's any permission.
And just like I did survey my neighbors' live outdoor lighting in my house, it may think it looks great and it has the beauty of the house and the security scene.
And also for clarification, I also want to state that of course, I don't like the Prop. A money string attached.
Do we have, and I'm just, I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion. I'm sorry. You're correct. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
The lights?
Just Wong's, the lights? Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
No.
Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepherd-Romney? I was going to acquire as part of that, but I almost said that. All right. The next issue is... Madam Mayor, it does appear that we're getting close to moving Option Number 1. The Director has some adjustments to the numbers in the account. Is that something?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful if it were to happen.
To answer, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, your question, the first repainting occurs after five years. And the first year deposit for future maintenance and replacement is $10,000. And then every year after that, the assumption is that it would grow 1.75%. So you would look for that sort of contribution for many years. But it's not a significant amount of money.
And I asked you, there are no funds left in the account. Or what is in this fund at this time?
I believe that the donations account currently is zero for Lacy Park Rose Arbor because you did create that in June.
And we have not received anything yet?
We've not received anything yet. All of a sudden, it will become very full of money.
Okay, which is good.
So if I might, Mayor, for your third I move, where it says in an amount not to exceed, you would just replace the, all the language that comes after the not to exceed with number 625,000, 090. You do not need to mention the bid alternate as you're not awarding it. No less than City Attorney thinks that we should mention that we're not awarding it. I would just leave it silent.
Okay, so it's the first?
So Option 1, the third I move to award a construction contract.
That number is adjusted to reflection number 625.
090.
090.
And then everything else.
Stays the same.
Everything else would, in that motion, would stay the same. So including path lighting, bid alternate, you would strike that out. The next I move to authorize the Director, the contract change order amount would change to $31,255. That represents the change in the construction.
You rounded that.
The next I move to appropriate would become $205,545.
Got it.
Okay, and then the final one would change the account number to 281-50-3601-7150, parentheses, Lacy Park Rose Arbor.
Would the authorize, okay, as well as appropriate expenditures by...
And then the rest of that continue?
And the rest of that remains the same because that is the direction to the Finance Department. Create this budget and now expense it by adjusting the budget on the expenditures.
All right.
Would you like to make the motion, Mayor?
Sure, I would love to make the motion. Do you want me to read all that?
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity. I move to approve the plans and specifications for the Lacy Park Rose Arbor Reconstruction Project number 18-7150. And I move to find that the Lacy Park Rose Arbor Reconstruction Project number 18-7150 is categorically exempted from under sections 15302 and 15303E of the California Environmental Quality Act and direct the Director of Planning and Building to file the notice of exemption with the State and County of Los Angeles. And I move to award a construction agreement to Quartz Construction Company, LLC of Glendora, for the Lacy Park Rose Arbor Reconstruction Project number 18-7150 in an amount not to exceed $625,090. And I move to authorize the Director of Parks and Public Works to approve the contract change orders if warranted in a cumulative amount not to exceed $31,255, which represents a 5% contingency to address unseen site conditions or other circumstances that may arise. And I move to appropriate $205,545 from the Capital Improvement Fund reserves and direct the Finance Department to increase the project budget accordingly. And I move to authorize staff to increase revenues by $250,000 in account 281-503601-7150, paren, Lacy Park Rose Arbor, end of paren, as well as appropriate expenditures by $250,000 to account 206-50-4600-7150, paren, Rose Arbor renovation, end of paren. Anybody will second that?
I will second that with an amendment upon a request for information. Is that account, the $250,000, is an account number 281-50-3601?
I say yes, and up the dot of a dash. Thank you for that statement. We need to have a roll call. I think so. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Udi? Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Udi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepherd-Romney? I apologize. Thank you very much. Progress is pretty big. Next, we have Agenda Item 13 regarding the financial statements annual audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. Thank you very much. Finance Director Chung?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'll be presenting the annual financial statement this year ended June 30, 2019. And we're focused on moving forward to 2020, but this closes our fiscal year towards 1890. The presentation tonight or the agenda, I'm just going to touch on the overview, which is going to cover the outcomes and the process with the audit. Touch on the financial highlights. And then we're going to have President Ryan, who's from Lansville Lungard, our auditing firm. And then we'll take questions. Each year, local governments in California are required to file the results of independently audited state finances. The annual financial statement communicates the city's financial position and the activity for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. Another way to look at it is that financial report for the city. The outcome of the audit, the city received an unqualified, unmodified, clean audit opinion letter. A clean opinion letter communicates to the users that the financial statements are clearly presented and that the information used in the statements are reliable. Very minor issues that don't warrant a change are presented in the Statement of Auditing Standards 1114, which is in attachment 2 of the standard. I wanted to highlight the chart that I have here. I wanted to show the progress that finance has made over the years. It starts with fiscal year 1415. Wanted to reflect that the material weaknesses and significant deficiencies that were reflected back in 1415. But you can see progressively, we've made improvements. back in 1415, but you can see progressively, we've made improvements, and in 1819, we had no findings. And I wanted to really applaud Mark Siegries, our accounting manager, who took lead on this role for the past two years, and was able to have a successful clean audit. This really shows the city's strong financial condition, with healthy general fund balance. The general fund balance, mostly notable measure of the city's financial health is the general fund balance. The city started the year at 12.4 million dollars, but ended the year at 17.3 million, or an increase of 4.9 million dollars. This meets the city's financial policy on the general fund reserve being 40%. And when looking at the reserve ratio against the general fund revenues, we're at 59%. So that was an increase of 14, 19% of excess beyond the 40% reserve that per the financial policy. So I'll be coming back to council on February 12th, City Council meeting to provide the excess reserve funds that would be proposed to be transferred to the city's fund. Going into general fund revenues, we have a million dollars higher compared to 1718 fiscal year. The general fund expenditures were about 700,000 dollars higher. On the revenue end, the reason for the million dollars was mainly due to the property taxes. And on the expenditure side, it was mostly driven by the public safety, having overtime needs, and workers' comp. For the citywide net position, this reflects the overall financial condition of the city. It shows the total assets and liabilities of the city. The total net position was 193.2 million dollars. This was an increase of 4.8 million dollars. The revenues were increased 1.8 million dollars over the prior fiscal year, and then expenditures were about half a million dollars higher compared to the prior fiscal year. Regards to the net position, it really consists of three categories: the investment in capital assets, restricted net position, and the unrestricted net position. Just kind of diving into those three categories, the capital assets, 193 million dollars. This includes land, construction in progress, structures in improvement, furniture and equipment, and infrastructure. For the city, this will be City Hall, Lacy Park, the library, fire engines, the police vehicles, streetlights. Regards to the restricted net position, these are assets that are subject to agreements with creditors, developers, renters, or regulations of other governments. This was at 4.1 million dollars. And for the city, this mainly revolves around the recycling grants that we have, the gas tax, A and C, Measure R, and then. And lastly, the unrestricted net position, this is anything that's not capital restricted. This ended at negative 4.1 million dollars. The reason for the negative was mainly due to two items: the debt, pension liability, and the other close-in point of benefits, or OPEB liabilities. And this is a requirement by GASB 68, and a new requirement by GASB 75. Just kind of going into the OPEB liability, this was hit the year at 5.7 million dollars. And the reason for that is currently the city pays only the annual contribution, and then the unfunded portion of the OPEB is currently not being paid out. Now, I mentioned that you do pay the annual contribution, but also you do pay the unfunded liability as well. Moving on to the cash and investments, we ended the year at 35.9 million dollars in total cash and investments. Eighty-five percent of that was in investments, which per the investment policy, which we counted as a drop. Fifteen percent of that wasn't cash. It was relatively higher this particular fiscal year, due to that we were transitioning banks, and we wanted to avoid bank fees, so we kept a higher volume of cash, but this particular fiscal year, we should see that drop. On long-term liabilities, the city only has one bond, the 2007 pension obligation bond. This matures in fiscal year 2324. The debt service in 1819 was 219,000 dollars. 645,000 was principal, 174,000 was future, and the remaining principal currently outstanding is 2.6 million dollars. The last slide that I have for presentation is the pension liability, currently sits at 29.9 million dollars. That's the unfunded pension liability. It's a slight increase of 200,000 from prior year, and that's due to salary increases permanently. The OPEB liability, as I mentioned, the net position is 5.7 million dollars, and there was no change. Last item here, the general fund budgetary comparison, this is really looking at budget versus what we actually brought in, or what we actually spent. And on the revenue side, on my staff report, I already stated revenues, but it should really include fund balance as well, because that's really the whole appropriation amount for the year. So we had 41.1 million dollars of budget, we brought in 41.6 million, about half a million dollars higher, and that was mainly driven by the investment. In the expenditures, we budgeted 24.6 million dollars, which we spent 24.2 million dollars, which was about 400,000 dollars less. And that was mainly driven by general admin and public works departments having some vacancies. But this was offset by public safety, spending on overtime needs, and workers' comp. And I want to turn it over to Brian from LSL.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Brian Gruber, partner with LSL CPAs, the independent auditor, engaged to conduct a financial statement audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. So LSL has been engaged to conduct a financial statement audit. The purpose of a financial statement audit is the expression of an opinion on the financial statements. We conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted audit standards, and also government audit standards. Those standards require that we perform procedures necessary to plan, obtain an understanding of your internal controls, your financial policies that feed into your financial statements, and then ultimately perform procedures in order to render an opinion on financial statements. Our audit processes here entail a few steps. We came and visited the city during the fiscal year to review the city's policies and procedures, and follow up on our understanding. We do this, as I mentioned, to assess risks and plan and conduct our audit, which we did after the fiscal year, approximately in the month of October this year. Our financial audit entails procedures such as certain account analysis on the financial statements, to make sure that the amounts and the disclosures of the financial statements are properly presented. We do things like send out confirmations to third parties, such as financial institutions we work with, to ensure that the amounts are properly stated. In addition, we do cutoff procedures to make sure that the transactions and the events that occurred are being reported in a proper fiscal period. The financial, this ultimately feeds into the financial statements that have been provided to you, which include our independent auditor's report, management's discussion and analysis, the statement of footnotes, and some supplementary information. The ultimate goal and purpose from what we do is our audit opinion. And we, what does this opinion mean? It means that the financial statements are properly stated and can be relied upon by outside parties, that the information is materially accurate. Now, management and staff are responsible for preparing the financial statements and what goes into the financial statements. We're purely responsible for expressing an opinion that the information is materially accurate. We express what's referred to as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and what this means is that the information that we audited can be relied upon and is materially accurate. In addition to our auditor opinion, in accordance with government auditing standards, we're required to communicate to you deficiencies noted in the audit. Those were discussed briefly. Please to report that we noted no deficiencies in internal control deemed to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. In addition, we are required to communicate other matters to the City Council. For example, during the process of us conducting our audit, if we have difficulties in conducting our audit, maybe staff and management are failing to timely provide information, or not providing information, we would communicate that to you. We noted no matters in that area. At times, we may have disagreements with regard to accounting principle and procedure and reporting. We have no such items, and so no difficulties or disagreements in regard to the audit. In summary, LSL has been engaged to conduct a financial audit. We completed our audit of the financial statements, and expressed an unmodified opinion. And in conjunction with our audit, we issued two communication letters of SAS 115 and Audit Communication Letter, which I discussed. So any questions for myself?
I also want to thank Treasurer Wong and the Plans Department, Mark Kent Ellis. The audit.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobowski?
With Councilman Yudi as the liaison, the finance liaisons, we found this group to be extremely professional to work with, and we found the October meeting to be very comforting and reassuring to the status of the city. So thank you for your work.
Councilmember Todd?
I have no questions. I'll also extend our appreciation to our Finance Department, and our Treasurer, and our City Manager, as well as LSL in performing this audit. I know that you guys put in a lot of hard work, because every time I wanted to use that office, you guys wouldn't. So, I thank you.
You've got an office.
Yeah, so I don't want to go there, people call me there.
All right, Vice Mayor Yudi?
Hi, so Mark and Annie, Mark particularly a high five. I mean, to go from, you know, eight and up to bits in the letter down to zero, I'd like to give you credit, Mark, but sorry, you inherited a clean plate on this one. So great work and great improvement, you gave us all the comfort. You know, we can talk separately. Did you say we go about 900,000 on the '07 OPEB bond?
I didn't, sorry.
I just said we're going to go on the OPEB bond.
OPEB bond.
We owe about 900,000?
No, the outstanding principal was 2.6 million.
Okay. What interest rate are we paying?
When I last time checked, it was 5.7.
Yeah, because if we're paying 5%, and we're earning 2%, should we pay that off? And I just.
You're right.
Another one of those.
You go with your, you assume that later.
Okay, thank you.
I also thank Paul, and Annie, and also Mark. I know that it was a lot that you guys did for the last year, and really stepped up, and I appreciate that Director Chung and Paul, you're on board. And thank you so much for outside. I am thrilled as well that we had such a good result, and an improvement over the last two that I have been a part of, and I don't know the history before that, but I really appreciate that staff did an outstanding job this year, and have our Treasurer on board, who are still thinking of ways to keep improving and keeping this getting high. So I thank you for doing that, and everybody involved in a very good audit. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we need to make a motion to receive and file.
Submove.
A second. A voice vote, is okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Seeing none, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for the presentation tonight. Is it possible now to take our break, because we sort of went out of order? So, for the audience that seems to need a break, so we will break for about 10 minutes, and continue on with the agenda. Our next item of business is listed as Agenda Item 14, Authorization of Disagreement of Comment Letter Regarding the Draft Southern California Association of Governments Connect SOCal Plan. And Director Trump?
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd-Romney.
And you're taking it, not all of them?
Oh, yeah. The Southern California Association of Governments have released a draft planning document called Connect SOCal. The intent of this regional planning document is to list all the potential projects intended to improve local and regional mobility over the course of the next 25 years. Planning documents such as this are often used to establish eligibility for future state and federal aid grants. Projects identified in the draft plan include highway improvements, transit, rail and bus facilities, HOV lanes, active transportation, traffic signal synchronization, and intersectional improvements. The Connect SOCal Plan is currently in its public comment period. The department is not proposing to include any projects into the plan, and in fact, we recommend, based on last year's public deliberation on the Measure R 710 project, that the only noted San Marino project, which involves increasing the number of left turn lanes at the intersection of Sierra Madre Boulevard and Huntington Drive, be removed from the plan, as it is inconsistent with the city's strategic planning goal of preserving our beautiful single-family neighborhoods. The department has prepared a comment letter that is included in your packet for your consideration and action. This concludes step one.
Thank you very much, Director Trump. Councilmember Todd, do you have any questions?
No, I, I, I just don't.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
No, no question.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions.
I unfortunately have questions, but I don't know if it's worth bringing up at this time. We can talk about the reference to the letters during our expansion portion. All right. I have, just so the committee is aware, I have made some, or have some suggestions about the draft comment letter, but we will open public comment at this time, and I have Ms. Johnson.
I, Dr. Romani and I wrote a letter in response to SCAG for this project, but this is in response to their, the environmental impact report. They have requested public input for their EIR. And so our letter is a bit different from yours. And so our, I think we're all in agreement, basically, of not wanting this one proposed plan. Our letter focuses a little bit on the EIR and what's lacking in it. And what's lacking really is any, any help or consideration of the impacts that San Marino is going to face with the changes that are proposed. And so basically, the EIR, their plan says, under environmental impacts, it says thresholds of significance, one of them is that their projects would conflict with a program plan ordinance or policy addressing circulation system, including transit, road, bicycle, and pedestrian facilities. What they focus on is that their plan can't conflict with existing policies of local and local jurisdiction. So what we see is a big, a lack of attention, that on the one hand, they're saying, we're going to respect local jurisdiction, and on the other hand, they've got a regional plan, and because of, by definition, the regional plan can't address every local issue, a lot of that is left out. And so that's all we wanted to point out, is that really, what they're doing with this regional plan, while they have a regional plan, they're leaving the cities basically dependent on themselves, which I think you're just. So our concerns as residents here, and we've heard all this a lot in the last few months about the 710 project, is increasing northbound, southbound traffic. Those are the streets, historically, we've had a problem on Los Robles, Opio, El Molino, Garfield. Now that South, now that Passitoo is increasing their development eastward, there's going to be more problems on the east streets, Sierra Madre, Garfield, I mean, San Gabriel. So, and then the issue of the eastbound, westbound traffic on Huntington, which we discussed a lot with the SR710, the schools, do they have other options, that other streets or freeways that they could focus on instead of Huntington Drive? And then eastbound, westbound, cut through traffic, Monterrey Road. And then eastbound, westbound cut-through traffic, Monterey Road, the rain road. So I think we're all very much aware of that. The other thing I wanted to bring up, because I think there was some confusion, some residents during the SR 710 project did talk to people at Metro about the signal synchronization and the TMS project. So there is in our letter, and I won't go over it all now, but what is, it's a definition of what is in the adaptive control system. And I think that that's important to know, because I think when people had talked during the SR 710, when they had talked with the county, they were confused as to how this works. And so I think it's important to know that the system, if you fly into it, you do lose time and control over the traffic, which is what Councilman Taub had explained earlier. So those are our comments, and we're happy that the city is actively pursuing our interests and considering them. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do we have any else?
Oops, sorry.
This is public comment by Dr. Romani, and also Chief...
Basically, they are doing the same thing they have done before. Steve, whose I have talked to, and we don't want, we said, no, no, we don't want you, Romani, just go away. They come back. Metro went back to, I talked to the guy that's SCAG, I don't know if I told you this about, I talked to the guy, his name is Oak, Oakie, and he's the one that we're supposed to talk to. And I asked him, what are you guys doing with, you know, San Marino? He says, we got the information from Metro. So they don't quit. You close the door, there's a lot of windows. So what we, so what we really need to do is just tell them, we did it, we, this time we talked in your excellent letter, but it needs to be a lot stronger. They don't listen. We don't want them here. We have six schools on this street, and we're not going to accept any improvement in the flow in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Romani. And also, I believe, Mr. Voeck?
I have a couple things I want to discuss.
This is regarding, I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke.
No.
No, this is just a Gen. Item 14. I thought you had a public comment about that.
No, I'll hold off.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments regarding this Gen. Item, which is Gen. Item 14? Seeing none, then I'll turn to council discussion. Councilmember Jacobowski?
I certainly think we need to go forward with the letter as amended. I like your wording, that's a little bit stronger at this point, and we're done.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I think the committee has told us what they want, so I conclude without my colleague, Councilmember Jacobowski, regarding the... Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Taub?
I agree, although I would like to add, ensuring the safety of our schools and high-quality residential neighborhoods. I think that the school safety issue should be included within our objection. And by the way, this same language was in the last time they did it. They pop it up every time, and I don't recall being objected last time, but...
Vice Mayor?
So I had it better.
All right, so the public is aware, I suggested comments... Okay, so the city, this is a reading night tonight, so just to share with you, we've fleshed out the letter that we're discussing and approving for transmission. The body of it will read, "The City of San Marino appreciates the opportunity to comment on the draft of the 2020-2045 Regional," and insert the rest of the name here, "compared by SCAG. The City Council is in conflict with the policies, the City Council, sorry, at its January 8, 2020 meeting, has determined that the project titled Huntington Drive," this is this multimodal capacity enhancement, "is in conflict with the policies previously adopted by San Marino City Council, most recently in August 2019, and is wholly inconsistent with the City of San Marino's goals of ensuring a healthy community," which we added, because that was one of their named goals, "the safety of San Marino schools, and high-quality residential neighborhoods," which we had before. And then last paragraph reads, "Consequently, the City of San Marino objects to the project's inclusion in the SCAG Regional Transportation Plan, and requests its elimination from," need to write the full title, "FTIP, and all future iterations of such plans, as well as, probably should say, its inclusion in the 2020 and 20 to 2045 Regional Transportation Plan, and all future iterations of such plans." So there is a change, a typo that I have there, and the addition by Councilmember Taub. So if I have a...
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the letter as amended and just read into the record to the Southern California Association of Government regarding the Connect SoCal Plan.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we have California American Water Company presentation regarding proposed rate increase in service area consolidation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The California American Water Company has filed an application with the California Public Utilities Commission to raise the water consumption rates charged for drinking and irrigation water supplies to San Marino residents in the city. Mr. Brian Baretto of CalM Water will be making a presentation tonight on the rate case, and be available to answer any questions you or the community might have. There is a public participation hearing hosted by the Public Utilities Commission on January 29th at 6:00 PM at the Courtyard by Marriott in Monrovia. I will be in attendance at the hearing, and if available, one of your august body may be there as well. This concludes the department's presentation. And we'll turn it over now to CalMerit.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Let me see if this works. My name is Brian Baretto, and I serve as the External Affairs Manager for Southern California and California American Water. Tonight, I and Wes Owens, our Director of Regulatory and Rates, is here with me tonight to answer any questions you may have. And as your staff has mentioned, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take you through a very short presentation. We did meet with the City Manager and your Public Works Director in October, and we did provide them the same information, and I hope that they did share that with you, so that you could come in prepared with some questions that we could answer. We are happy to answer any and all questions, and if I could ask that I could get through the presentation, and then we can answer questions at the end if you would like. Great. So just to set the scene, as you are aware, we provide water to the entire city of San Marino and portions of the city of Roseme, San Gabriel, Tempe City, and Los Angeles. We have been in this district for more than 50 years. Just to sort of lay the background, there are three water systems that we provide water here in Los Angeles County. The San Marino system, which makes up the cities that I just went through, the Duarte system, which is east of here, and then our Baldwood Hills Service Area, which is unincorporated Los Angeles County. Water here is 90% groundwater and about 10% purchase water, which we get from the Metropolitan Water District, and we do have an emergency connection with the City of Pasadena. We have about 1,200 residents, customers that are residents, and about 1,600 of them are on our Low Income Rate Assistance Program. We do have a very strong community outreach program, as a lot of you know. We have about, we contributed about $178,000 in conservation-related activities, programs, rebates to our customers in the Los Angeles County District, which includes the City of San Marino. And we've created partnerships of about $10,000 in our San Marino water system, particularly in the City of San Marino, for example, the San Marino Chamber of Commerce, the San Marino Schools Festival, the San Marino Chamber. We are also one of the longest-standing San Marino Chamber members, and then we also, three years ago, we had one of the largest rain barrels giveaway in the City of San Marino as well. And I believe some of you came out, actually came out to that, or did pick up, I think Councilman Wang did attend, if I remember correctly.
I'm willing to...
Oh, okay. So we're here to talk about our general rate case application. California American Water is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, and once every three years, we are required to file an application. And in June, or July of 2019, we filed a rate application for 2021 through 2023. We anticipate, over the next 18 months, of going through testimony, data requests, public participation hearings, that we should have a decision from the Public Utilities Commission sometime in late December 2020, with rates taking effect in January 1st of 2021. Typically, the commission, as you know, they will review our application. They have the authority to approve, modify, or completely reject our application. So this isn't just a one-sided process where we present our application to the commission, they rubber stamp it, and then kick it back to us. There is a group, or an office within the commission known as the Ratepayer Advocacy Group Office. They work on behalf of the customer, and they review our testimony, they review the application that goes before the commission. And I believe at this point, we have received almost over 600 data requests from them, asking for clarification about our application, what are certain components of it, looking for more detail. So it's a true, open, and honest conversation back and forth between us, the commission, and the ratepayer advocate group. Historically, the PUC, when we put forth our proposal, they typically have not and do not give us 100% or approve 100% of what our initial proposal is. And I want to remind you that the numbers that we're going to go through tonight is our initial proposal, is the proposal that we put forth in July of 2019. And they will change. They will change over the process of the next 18 months, because there is, like I said, an open and honest conversation between us, the commission, and the advocate group. So I wanted to share this slide with you, because I think it's important for our residents, your customers, our customers, your residents, and yourself, to understand how each dollar is spent within our Los Angeles County District. As you will see, the majority of the dollar is spent in infrastructure. That's wells, pipes, fire hydrants, reservoirs, and water production. That's either us pumping water out of the basins, the two basins that we get water out of, and/or treatment of that water, should there be, need to be any treatment of the water that we're serving our customers. The key drivers, as you will see here, is capital investments. Again, everybody wants to have clean, safe, reliable, and affordable water. The important thing is, without capital investments, without us investing back into the system, if the water doesn't come out of customers' taps, and/or if we don't get any, if the water is unhealthy or not safe, there's really no advantage to that. So the majority of the key drivers of this rate case that we've put forth is in capital investments back into the system. One of the key components, or the largest component of our rate case, is this year we are proposing to consolidate our three Southern California districts into one district. And the advantage of that is, over the long-term effect, the cost of doing business and the risk of any sort of emergency costs that come up is spread out over a larger customer base. Right now, without consolidation, we're not allowed to spread out any major costs or any larger costs over a large customer base. Right now, it's over a much smaller customer base. So it's important for us. The other advantage is, our Southern California districts basically use the same kind, get water from the same source, either from the basin or either purchase water. So we're trying to mitigate other, certain districts being charged higher water and other districts being charged less water because of where the water, where we get the water from. So we're trying to create an even playing field for everybody. The other important piece about it is, our Los Angeles County districts are all served by the same staff. Our operations center is down in the City of Roseme, and we run a very, very lean team down there. We're 25 employees that go as far north and northeast as Duarte, and travel all the way, all the way out to the Baldwood Hills View Park area, which is just north of Culver City, and then travel over into this area. So we're very strategic about how we move people around, but 25 people in that big of a space, and the amount of customers that we serve is, we like to think we have a very lean operation. This is the breakdown. I would like to point out, the chart on the left is our proposal that we filed in July last year. And you will see that this is based on the average use in our San Marino district here, which is, the majority of it is the City of San Marino, which is 142 CGLs, which is little under 18 cubic feet, or, excuse me, 18 units of water. And you can see the difference, this is a, the difference between consolidation and without consolidation. You can see that there is a considerable price difference with, under consolidation versus without consolidation. These next couple of slides, it's important, as I had mentioned, our capital investments back into the system. The proposal is $50 million over a three-year cycle, which is for the entire Los Angeles District, which includes the City of San Marino. You will notice that the La Mandar Well, Mission View, Longden, and the ongoing projects, those are all specific to the City of San Marino, because they all reside within your city limits. Roseme Tank and the Chromium 6 water treatment facilities, even though they're not in the City of San Marino, these infrastructure investments will benefit the residents and our customers in the City of San Marino, because our entire system is an integrated system. So wherever we're doing an investment, whether it be in the City of San Marino, or for example, in the City of San Gabriel, or in the City of Roseme, the residents and the customers here in the City of San Marino benefit from that investment as well. This next slide also, it just continues our investments that we have proposed. You can see the dollar amounts and the completion years. The thing that I would point out is, a lot of our infrastructure investments roll over multiple rate case cycles. So for example, a couple of them, you'll see they were, they were already approved in our 2018 and 2020 general rate case cycle, which was approved last cycle. But the completion date is in 2021, just to use example, the Okno Booster Station. So the reason that the completion date goes to 2021, and we're counting it in this rate case cycle, is because there has been a delay, either internally with us, or it wasn't a priority at that time. We did get approval, so we're going back and asking for the commission to allow us to continue to complete the project, because now it's moved to the forefront of our projects. So this next slide outlines some of the statewide reliability, resiliency, and climate change components of our general rate case. And as we all know, some of the big pieces are earthquake, resiliency, wildfire planning studies. One of the big pieces is that we're looking to consolidate all of our conservation programs. One of the big pieces is that we're looking to consolidate all of our conservation programs statewide, so that regardless of whether we have customers in Northern California, Southern California, or in the Central Coast, in our Monterey District, everybody will be able to take advantage of the same conservation programs as well. As your staff had mentioned, there are a couple of other opportunities for residents and customers to participate in the general rate case process. We are sending out, in the process of sending out, open house invitations to all of our customers, and all of the residents of the city of San Marino should be receiving this invitation within the next couple of days. We are holding an open house. The date is Wednesday, January 2nd. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 in the city of Monrovia. We put it right in between our Duarte system and our San Marino system, so that both sets of customers can come and participate. This is important, I think, for the customers and your residents to attend because this will allow them to have a very frank, dig-down-into-the-leads conversation. Staff mentioned that there's a public participation hearing on Wednesday, the 29th, in Monrovia at the same location. The public participation hearing is going to be very different than our open house. Public participation hearing, there'll be an administrative law judge there, there'll be a court reporter, and it'll be very prescribed. They will only allow, there won't be a give-and-take, as there will be at our open house. So I would encourage everybody to attend our open house, and should they, should any of the residents, customers have any interest in attending the Public Utilities Commission public participation hearing as well, and yourself, I would encourage you to attend as well. And with that, Wes and I are open to any questions that you have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tolls, do you have any questions?
I do. What's the rate of return for San Marino for your guys?
Wes. This is Wes Owens.
You post that you have, I think it is, you're proceeding a 7.5% rate of return on your investment?
Our authorized rate, weighted average cost of capital, so rate of return is 7.61%.
And what's it for San Marino?
It's 7.61%.
So it's 7.61 across the board, even though expenses might be different for San Marino, capital costs might be different for San Marino. We're obviously paying, you're looking for a $700,000 increase in revenues from San Marino. You don't break it down, or you can come in here and tell me what the rate of return off of your San Marino customers are?
Yeah, so our cost of capital is determined in a separate proceeding from this one, also by the Public Utilities Commission. Basically, we look at different components. We look at what our return on equity should be, what our actual cost of debt is, both historically and looking forward. Yes, we look at it for the entire state. It's standard rate-making procedures to request a cost of capital, weighted average cost of capital for the entire state, and it's not broken down by individual cities.
You then understand the problem, that when you're looking for a 16% increase, 23 on the non combined or non consolidation, we look at that as you're trying to make that 7.6% off of our backs, at least part of it, because you're looking for a substantial increase larger than any other, any other location. You're coming after San Marino for the highest rate in the Los Angeles area, and I believe it's even higher than, it's about the same as it is in Ventura. So when you can't tell me what your rate of return off of that is, it leads me to believe that you're, are your rate of return is being, we have a greater than 7.61% rate of return off of San Marino than, and it allows you to average out across the state? Well, let me ask you a different question, because it's evident that information's not available to you tonight. Could I go back to the slide, the proposed $50 million in capital expenditures? Okay. The La Mondo reservoir improvement, where is that located? Where's La Mondo reservoir?
Is, I don't know the physical address. It's, I'll get it for you, I don't know.
But you're saying that's San Marino?
Yes, it's in the city, it's in the city of San Marino.
Okay, Mission View well treatment, Rosemead Tank and Booster Station replacement. The Rosemead Tank and Booster Station replacement, even though the Street of Rosemead and the town of Rosemead are not San Marino, you can tell me that's San Marino?
So, as I mentioned, we have an integrated system.
Well, I know, but you also said, abuse me for interrupting, you said that those are in San Marino. Now I want to know, because I know there's one by the high school.
Sure.
I know that there, there's probably some small ones around. I know that you're spending, someone's spending a tremendous amount of money over, near the Mission District on a reservoir.
Sure.
I don't know a lot of this other stuff.
I'm more than happy to provide you with all the locations.
Okay. Now let's assume for purposes of worry that they are in San Marino.
May I make one clarification?
Yeah.
If I may. And the Rosemead Tank and Booster Station is in the San Marino water system.
Does it serve San Marino?
Yes.
Okay, how does the Rosemead Tank serve San Marino? Because water generally goes down.
We have the ability to boost water up into this service area. We have two systems. We have the San Marino upper system, and we have the San Marino lower system. And the San Marino lower system and the San Marino upper system are connected. And at given times during the year to help meet demand, and wherever we need to move water around, should we be doing infrastructure investments, should there be an emergency, should we have a leak, we are able to move water from one location to another location in opposite directions.
Okay. How about the Longden well we deal?
Yes.
That, the well we deal also serves San Marino?
Serves, yes, it serves the residents of the city of San Marino.
Okay. Of that investment, how much of that serves other cities?
I can find out for you.
Okay, I would, it's, you know, it's tough because I'm looking at you guys seeking 16.64% off of our residents, and you're using capital investment budget for the Los Angeles District as a validating point, and yet that information's not available, nor is the information on the rate of return. This makes it very frustrating. I mean, how can I go out and tell the public, no, it's okay, that 16%, yeah, that serves San Marino, when indeed you can't answer me that question?
We'd be more than happy to provide you with that information, and if you're planning to come to the open house or to the PDA, we'd be able to, happy to provide you with that information as well. And I'm happy to provide the information to your city manager.
Okay, what is the specific substantiation of increasing us 16%?
0.64.
Thank you. Almost 17%.
Yeah.
What is the specific rationale behind gouging us 16.64%? And yet Balden Hills is a 1.95% increase. Duarte actually is looking at benefiting from this. Rio Plaza District sees an 11% increase. What is the substantiation, why San Marino is facing so much more increase than these other, than these other communities?
As part of our proposed consolidation, we have proposed a rate design that also is a consolidated rate design. It has different rates for the different tiers, but setting the same tiers consistently across California. And I think the thing you might note is that San Marino is also the highest average use amongst all those districts. So by having a more conservation-oriented rate design, it does increase.
But we have also different levels, so if you use more, you pay more. It's already built into our bill. I don't understand that rationale at all, that's irrelevant. If I have a property that's four acres, I'm going to use more water than if it's not.
Duarte is 123 units and is getting a benefit, and we're 143 units, and getting 16%.
Yeah.
Yeah, they draw. They literally get less of the rate right now.
And Ventura is 127 units, less than 1%.
Sorry, I'm, I got one more question, and because this is confusing, and that is, if you take a look at page 491 of what was presented to us, which is basically the third page of your notice of general increase, you have under San Marino.
We didn't get that.
Average bill.
That.
It says percentage increase, and it has both a number, a, it can either read, as it's stated, 23.62% or $23, which may very well invalidate your notice, but I'll be back to.
It's a dollar increase of 23.62%.
Yeah, I, you see what I'm referring to? Okay, does that invalidate your notice?
I don't believe so, but I'm not, that's not a legal question. I'm not an attorney, but.
What was the rate of return in 2015?
Oh, I'd have to look, I was not with the company in 2015, I couldn't tell you I was part of that, reading this process, but.
How about, when did you join the company?
2017.
What was the rate of return in 2017?
I believe it was 8.41%.
And what's the rate of return in 2018?
7.61%.
And so it's, it's now purportedly leveled off. And you say that's by statute, or by Public Utility Commission rules and regulations?
The rate of return?
Yes.
It's a separate cost of capital proceeding, that is by statute.
What happens if you get more than 7.61%?
Then the return on the investment would increase and the rates would go up. So since that's the.
If you end up getting more than what you anticipate, are rates are going to?
No, I'm sorry if I was not clear there. If we ask for more and we are authorized a higher rate of return, then our return on the invested capital goes up.
Well, let me ask you this one.
But if we, if we make more, no rate, if rate of return is higher than authorized, which rarely happens, it hasn't happened in my time with the company, then we aren't authorized to increase rate of return. Maybe I've.
Well, no, I'm just saying, do you give it back to us if this whole concept is based upon a rate of return of 7.61, and suddenly you're making 9% because you gouged San Marino 16%? You know, do we suddenly, do we get my back?
There is actually a mechanism where, in the years subsequent to what we call the test year. So in this case, 2021 is our test year. If in our test year, we earn a higher rate of return than what is authorized, in the subsequent years, we either have a rate decrease or we don't, we're not authorized for a full rate increase. So there is an adjustment mechanism.
Final question, how many wells actually serve San Marino? We're all, you say that 90% is groundwater, 10% is bought. Last year, how much did you buy from San Marino?
Oh, how much production? I can't say as far as how much is produced from the wells, but there are 12 wells in San Marino.
Okay, there are 12 wells, but was that sufficient to support San Marino?
Well, I know that we, I don't know if you want to speak to this or not.
So we do, as you, as you are aware, we are, the city of San Marino is a member agency to MWD, and because we are the utility that provides water to the city of San Marino, we are a member agency as well. And so there are contracts in place that we work with city staff to, that provide us the opportunity to purchase water from MWD, should there be a need for us to do blending or treatment or to help us meet demand. Yes.
Okay. Did that happen in San Marino last year?
I don't know the dollar amount, and I don't know the quantity, but I can get that for you.
But you, so you're saying, yes, it did happen?
Yes, it did. It's built into the contract, we are required to purchase a certain amount of water.
From MWD?
From MWD, yes.
Okay, I'll pass. One year, it's almost one year since I started, so.
Bye, Stan.
Go to slide six, if you don't mind. What is the category increase across your entire network, or the proposed increase?
Approximately 10.6%.
10%. Okay. And then what's your company's total revenue, total profits?
I'm sorry, sir, I don't have that information.
Because I'm sitting on you saying it's a $50 million capex that you're trying to cover.
Right.
And so I'm trying to see what your, you know, how big of a company you are, and how significant is 50 million to your?
A $50 million capital budget for us is significant. It's about a 20% increase over what we were authorized in our last three years, GRC.
Yeah, I just saw you have a $19 million in profit in 2016.
And our annual reports are available, publicly available online, and.
And here, why are you going 16%, 2%, 3%? Other than getting more money faster?
Well, it's based on the way that the commission's rate case plan is structured, wherein we are authorized, we can come in and request a budget for what's called the test year, which in this case is 2021. And it's our one opportunity every three years to state the costs we believe are necessary to continue, let's say, affordable, reliable water service. And so what happens is, because it's only, we're only allowed to do this every three years, there's usually a substantial three-year lag in a lot of these costs, a lot of the taxes.
What was your, the last rotation, what was your percentage step-up from your first year, second year, third year?
Requested or actually provided?
Both.
Because you said you shoot high because you never get it, so I want to know, where did the last one land?
So the last one.
What did you ask?
I believe our request is the last GRC was about 20, 20, okay, so in 2018, and using the same kind of structure, it was, the request was 25%. And we were.
Wait, second, wait, you had a three-year request, and it was 25%.
That's right.
What were the second and third year requests?
5.8 and 5.2.
Okay, what did you actually end up with?
Well, we ended up with 2.2% increase for the first year, and that, there were some factors in there. One was, it was factors outside the GRC. One was the cost of capital reduction that we discussed earlier, from 8.4% to 7.6%. So that decreased our costs, decreased our rates. And then the Tax Cuts and Job Creation Act reduction in the federal income tax rate from 35% to 21% also impacted that. But after all the dust settled with that and those changes outside the GRC, yeah, it was about 2.2%.
Yeah, what was the second, third year?
So the authorized was 4.7 for the second year and 4% for the third year.
Oh, we'd have to stand up there.
I have some questions.
It just, I mean, so much of this just is not passing the smell test, right? The penalizing of San Marino is one. The land grab with your 16.6 to 2.34, why not a more normalized increase? You, the last couple of years, you were, you know, 4%, 4.74%. You know, you're just, your numbers aren't passing the comfort test and the smell test for me. And I'm concerned that you are going to your public hearings, you know, and what can we really do to give some sanity to this discussion?
Well, obviously, my response would be, I believe that there is sanity in the discussion.
Well, what's your annual capex budget?
It fluctuates, but in last year, I believe it was about $86 million. Meanwhile, that's.
All right, so this 50 is less than 86?
The 50s for our LA district, and it is over. The 50s for our LA district and it is over a three-year period.
So it's not less. What's the, what was the capex in the LA district these last couple of years?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can.
I can get prepared with the real numbers. And it would be fun to see your model and how you penciled this out to come to these percentages.
Well, I mean, to that point and to what Brian, you mentioned earlier is, you know, we have a team of, I mean, I would put the review process for our rate case and our filing up against anything that anybody else sees because we have a team of economists, engineers, analysts who have decades of experience.
That are looking out for your best.
Yeah.
Their bonuses are based on your profits and on our.
I'm speaking about the Public Utilities Commission staff, compensation is not tied to our performance, guaranteed.
I would rather have private sector people look at this. Just water.
I did have some questions as well, I guess, and then, I don't know, we have a discussion for, more questions? Okay, so my concern, obviously, as stated, is that with the consolidation, if you get that, we're still by far and away the largest rate payer. And as a matter of fact, four out of the six of us will be losing money or reduced or less than 2% basically, so we're really carrying the laboring more. And I wanted to go to slide, I believe it's page eight, of what you put up, which was all the projects that I assumed the last three-year capital investment budget was meant to go. And I look at a completion rate during the time period, well, nothing's been completed to date, and as a matter of fact, two will be done in the last year, and the vast majority being five will be done in this next cycle. So how are we paying for something? Because last time, we also had the largest rate hike, which was produced, I understand, you explained that, but money was still given by residents or paid by residents in their bill, which was 4%, 4%, whatever those numbers were, to do these things, right? And we have not achieved any of them, nor will they even be achieved in the three-year period.
These are the proposed go-forward. These are not ones that were counted.
Where is the one that is at the page seven?
Previous page, yeah. There's 4.2 instead.
So this is the one that's, okay, so only the long-ded well redrill then is outstanding? And the others will be completed by the end of this year based upon the money raised in your last capital program? Is that fair to say?
That's my understanding, yes. And I always say that because I'm not an engineer group, that's what our engineering department.
Okay, well, I assume.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Or Brian can talk about the slide.
The answer is yes.
Okay, so then going to the next slide, sorry. So we have, I did not total this because this is the first time we're seeing any of these slides and I noticed that it was produced or I don't know when, but we didn't get this, so I didn't total. Are the amounts of these projects similar to the prior method project list?
I haven't totaled these projects either. I think what we are trying to show here is just projects, specific discrete projects that were impacting San Marino. We also have separate projects that are programmatic where we have a main replacement program where we are proactively replacing aging and failing maintenance systems that aren't shown here, so is the question, maybe I don't understand your question.
Okay, well, my question is, if 4% rate hike, and I know that was the last two years, I can't remember what you said, I wrote it down, of our last three-year approved that you just talked about with Vice Mayor, paid for the prior slides work, do you see what I'm saying? As part of your $50 million or whatever it was, last capital investment budget. Now, these are what you're saying you're doing for San Marino and yet we're going to need to be paying 16% or 23% more to achieve the same or less. I don't know what the amount is. Does that make any sense?
I think so, and just generally speaking, I can say that we are requesting an increased capital budget of about 20% across the district. And so what, the way our standard utility rate-making works for commission regulated utilities is that the increase is not to pay for the entire capital budget. In other words, if we say there's a 10 mil, or a $1.2 million project, we're not asking for $1.2 million in increased revenue to cover the cost of that project. Instead, what we're asking for is that authorization to complete that project and then have an increase in revenue to cover the return on that investment, in other words, to cover the cost of debt related to that investment and the cost of equity related to that investment. So, in other words, like I said, we're not asking for 1.2 million related to that project. Usually works out to more, about 12% of that project in the first year is the straight revenue requirement increase and then it's depreciated over time and then eventually it's, once it's fully depreciated, there's no return on that investment.
Right, okay, so, well, you could even put it all together, $50 million capital expense, this is the part that's relevant to San Marino.
So in other words.
When we get to the point, I just will make my point and then you can say whatever you want, because it doesn't make any sense to me. If you want us to pay 16.6%, nobody else is even close. One said 11 and everybody else has 2% or less. One actually gets a benefit. Duarte, which you're inviting us to go to the open house with Duarte, actually will get their prices reduced by 2.83%, so let's just say 3%. So we're going to get 16.64, okay? So we'll go to that open house. That makes a lot of sense to me because our two districts do not have the same issues at all in this plan that you're proposing. But assuming you don't get consolidation, without consolidation, we will have the benefit of spending 23.6%, so it goes up for us. Again, I look at this and starts going up to 16 now for Ventura, it goes up to 12% for San Diego, but we still got Duarte below us, all the numbers are below us with only the Evolvo district and this time the Rio Plaza, Rio Plaza district. Is that a negative or is that the highest one? Anyway, my only point is, we're all contributing to this, but with your consolidation as is proposed, we're going to pay the most, our city, our residents, or in the district, I'm assuming. And that to me doesn't make sense if we're getting this, basically the same amount of investment in our needs, in our capital right here, it should be relevant to how much you're spending here. We had a huge project that you needed to do and I know we're contributing to this statewide in San Diego and Ventura, that's your goal, but we're not getting any benefit here. You said that you're trying to even the playing field and there's 25 people now that are going to service, I guess even greater numbers, I'm not sure how that works out for us, but how is any of that, any of the money in this rate increase, rate increase at all justified by what I see of a capital investment budget, taking that they're not all locations here, but believing you that sometimes we get water from some of these things here? How is it ever going to justify it? I don't understand how. And I think that's why if you go before the PUC, they're going to be giving you another 2.2 again, because it makes no sense. And I know you're going to tell me that you're going to build those things, you're going to depreciate them, there's a debt and interest ratio that you have to maintain, et cetera, I got all that. I'm not an accountant, but I heard your words. But there is something that's not fundamentally fair if I'm looking at numbers that don't show you spending 16% more for us this coming time in the first year and our increases are roughly the same thereafter as the other districts. But still, we're bearing that burden more so than anybody else. And I don't understand, unless we have some crisis here and you're rebuilding something that's directly relevant to our district, what could be? Because we use more water, well, we also pay when we use more water. If I decide to water every day, every square foot of my property, I know I'm going to pay. That's a penalty, that's how you get us to conserve more. That is how a bill works with a tiered rate structure. I assume all your customers have that. So you built in conservation if the economics are there, and you do, that's how your bills are planned and I don't think you're taking that away. Are you changing the tiered structure?
We are changing the tiered structure, we're not taking it away. That's part of the change, the difference in the increase between San Marino and the lower using districts is that we are tightening the tiers and shifting more of the usage into the higher tiers.
So the 16% is not an across-the-board hike, it is only for the marginal, I don't know where, I don't know per household how it breaks out, but you're saying that's the only one or you're saying all of them don't go up by 16%?
Well, it'll vary, it'll vary depending on the level of usage, that's right, but.
Well, does now?
This is the average usage for, right, it does now, that's right. So well, also, since we're changing the rate design, modifying the rate design, it does change the level of increase based on usage, that's right. So this is the average usage for San Marino and this is the increase for that average usage. It doesn't change dramatically, it's kind of across the different usage, but it, you know, it does change.
So the highest tier, the highest usage tier.
Yes.
Percent-wise, the highest percentage.
That's right.
But none of us are going to be.
How do we know that? That information's not provided to me.
Yeah, it's not in this.
No.
Which is the only thing we got. And this only has, by the way, there's no open house or there's, the dates here you're talking about, these are what, as citizens, we would want to attempt, correct?
Yes, this is our public participation area.
Right, so this is, but I believe Brian, is that correct?
Yes.
You spoke about there's something else.
Yes.
Where we get together with Duarte and we can hear how great this is going to be from them and how bad it's going to be for us.
Well, it's an opportunity to come in and talk with our staff and drill down and answer all the questions that you have. It's not a comparison between San Marino and Duarte, that's not the purpose of the open house. The open house is to have yourselves and our residents and the customers come in and ask questions, the questions that you're asking and be able to really drill down into the nuances of this. We're happy to do that. I've also offered to city staff to do a briefing with, in small groups with each of you and we're more than happy to come up and meet with you one-on-one if necessary as well to help, to provide more context and have a better understanding of our business model if you would like.
I think we got, we get a sense of your business model, nine. And so I had one other question and that has to do with this overall sheet where, I don't know if you have this same paper, this is what we got in our package, I'm assuming it was furnished, that you produced them. It's page, this at the bottom says, no, it's not relevant to you. Page one of four, notice of GRC application.
Okay.
And on that, I just had another item of curiosity. In 2021, this is if with consolidation, so this is if you get your consolidation, right? And the plan is approved, I was interested to see that the residential percentage increase is 18% and I'm assuming that's an average of all this area. So I'm trying to figure out how anybody, since we're paying the most at 16.6, how it's 18 reflected here? Do you have an explanation? These numbers didn't make sense to what, if you continued on to the next page.
Sure.
Which is broken out by district.
So tell, or at least I get the sense you don't want me to get too much into the weeds on this, but the table you're looking at, not that table, the second table, is the proposed bill impact. So that's the individual customer impacts if they are an average usage customer. No, so I'm sorry.
No, I understand, so what's this?
And that is just the revenue generated, the revenue increase for all residential customers across the board. So like I said previously, there's some customers that are substantially higher users and will have a higher bill, and I don't know off the top of my head what that would be, and then there's customers that are lower users and might have a lower increase, so different customers, it balances out to that 18% of revenue increase.
So the 18% revenue increase is reflective of all bills for all customers in what will be the Southern Division?
Yes, all residential customers.
All residential customers. Okay.
No, that's not, I mean, that's the point I was trying to make, that's not the bill impact, that's just the revenue generated, it's like the increase to the anticipated revenue we're going to receive, it's like comparing apples to oranges. But it's, and I agree, it's, this is the format that the commission has asked us to use in our notices. They ask us to provide the revenue change by customer class total and then the bill impact. And I agree that in some cases, it can be a little unclear, which is why I can try to have the workshops and try to come and maybe I don't feel like we're doing a good job explaining it, but.
Right, but the revenue increase, I understand it's not a rate increase, but it's still your, more than any other category except for construction, which you're really going to have, you're increasing on that chart, residential revenue will increase by 18%. I understand, it's not my house.
Okay.
That's a correct, I'm correct in what I'm saying, am I not?
That's what our proposal is.
Right, right. And then underneath that, your multi-residentials are down, dropping by 40%. Again, this, so it's kind of a head stretch as to what's going on here and it does not look like you're operating in, I won't say, okay, I got it.
Mayor, how's your question?
Yes, please. Senator James, can we ask our questions?
Thank you. Okay, so this summer, when I received a notice that you were looking to add Bellflower, I confess, I scratched my head. The other areas I'm not quite as familiar with, but then as I read your report, this is what is concerning to me. Sorry, I have a few places marked here. Basically, it's saying that by acquiring these different districts, their operating costs or their costs of setting up would be spread among the other districts. So I presume that you aren't acquiring these other communities to be kind? Is there any profit involved in adding these additional cities and, here we go. CalM Water requests authorization to normalize the base, the rate base for the four acquisitions by spreading the utility plant acquisition adjustment related to these acquisitions statewide, either partially, as in the case with Bellflower, or entirely, as with the case with some of the others. So they get folded in to our costs, but again, I just, I can't believe that you would take these on with no benefit to CalM. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, the state has a very, both the State Water Resources Control Board and the Public Utilities Commission have a very strong policy towards consolidating water systems. There's over 3,000 water systems in California alone and they have, both the PUC, the State Water Resources Control Board and the state legislature have put forth policy, legislation statutes that, statutes that encourage consolidation. So as part of that, they do provide that, an opportunity to request from the commission that the purchase price of the systems be included in our cost of service rate base.
And is there ever any thought to getting those rolled out, being, coming, coming out of the $19 million profit rather than split with the cities? I also see at the same time, you're asking for increase in administrative expenses and more staffing. This makes sense as you are taking on this additional water service, but as my colleagues are saying, it feels like somehow it routes back to us and in some cases, other cities. So, you know, it just feels like, yes, we'll help carry the cost of getting these new communities settled in their water service.
Sorry, Ed, so you want me to talk generally about the. Sorry, Ed, so, just, you want me to talk generally about the...
So, you would disagree?
Oh, as far as the, the cost of employee, any, which is usually very minimal, we, part of the benefits we're able to bring is, to Brian's point, is that we are able to operate lean and efficiently within our service areas when we bring in new systems. Typically, we operate with our own employees.
But you're looking for more employees and more money for administration?
Well, we, if there, in the cases where we do bring employees over, we're also bringing in the customers who are generating revenue that cover that portion of the cost. So, there's, on an individual customer basis, for example, if Bellflower was approved, which it hasn't been by the PUC, so we don't know if that's going to go forward or not. If it was approved, in that specific case, I don't believe we're bringing, we're bringing over any employees, but let's say we were, the customers that we were bringing are also paying their bills, providing revenue that covers those costs.
But, but again, I'm, I'm addressing that comment about their acquisition costs being spread among the cities. So, that, that's of concern to us. When I first got my bill this summer, that was noted, and it, my neighbors even said that, does it feel very good? A few other questions. It feels like, since you really don't know how the administrative hearing officer is going to be ruling with all of the requests, it's sort of like throwing a bunch of things against the wall and seeing what will stick, and then after they stick, to see which ones you can get to during that year, which ones penciled out. You know, as I, I mean, it's almost, I hate to use the word insulting, but as I look at safety considerations, improving a safety management system, committing to securing assets across our systems, treatment plans against malignant acts, all kinds of different catchoffs that are included in so many of these special requests, again, led in the lines. Don't you have a pattern of, say, each cycle, picking four or five projects and really digging into them deep so that the hearing officer can hear that, yes, these are your highest priorities, rather than this huge number, which actually is intimidating to those of us who look at all the projects you're looking for? And it sort of helps us to understand why you're looking for such big increases.
Actually, we, we, we take a long process within our state of putting these applications together. We start well over a year ahead of time, work with operations, engineering, our engineering group prepares condition-based assessments of all of our assets that go into this rate case, that identify the projects that are necessary to continue to provide safe, reliable service and to continue to optimize our, our service. So, no, I, I don't believe that we're just throwing anything at the wall and seeing what's...
There's an awful lot of proposals. Thank you, again, I expressed the same upset. I will be honest with you, I had a water audit in my home because I thought my bill had gone through the roof, and guess what, I was a normal consumer. I mean, lovely man came out, that, that's really disappointing to hear.
Councilmember Wong?
Do you need some water? Why are there different tiers?
So, the different tiers are encourage conservation. So, so typically what we have is a service charge, okay, and that's a, a charge that is on the bill and it's the same every month, no matter what, and that's very standard across all water utilities. And then what we have are charges that are quantity-based, and it's basically pay for every unit of water that you use. What the state has encouraged, both the PUC and the State Water Resources Control Board, and as is pretty common, especially in Southern California, is our tiered rates, which the lower tier is kind of for the first bucket of uses, so let's say it's literally 10 units, and I'm just kind of making up numbers here, okay? And that is a lower rate because that is a rate that is intended to provide essential water use at a low, what the state considers essential water use at a lower rate. Then there'll be, let's say in the case of three tiers, a middle tier that's kind of at more of what the, the cost would be if there was no tiered rates, it's what kind of water cost to provide. And then there is a, a third tier that's basically, is higher, and it's at a higher use, higher usage to encourage customers to conserve water and help us maintain state...
So, because we use more, we are like in the higher tier?
Well, I don't know if generally, obviously, I think the average customer...
Can you go back to slide eight?
This is slide eight.
I'm sorry, how about the, the, with consolidation? This one, okay. So, the CGO is 100 gallons, right?
142 gallons.
So, if I take the proposed bill, 96, when they six it divided by 142.6, would that be a good measurement, like cost per gallon?
It's not the cost of providing water necessarily because, like I mentioned earlier, we do have a meter charge. Let's say in, in kind of a perfect world, the meter charge would cover all of our fixed costs because it's a set fixed charge and it would cover all of our fixed costs. Do you mind if I go to a different slide? But what you can see here is that fixed costs make up 75% of our, of our cost structure. And so, the commission won't allow us to recover 75% of our costs in the meter charge. If they did, or if we proposed that, then if a customer used a lot more water, their bill would be substantially more than the, the customer who's using the small...
I was trying to help you, can you go back to...
Yeah, sure. I like that.
I mean, I, I mean, I mean, I mean...
You feel bad for him?
Because what I did was, can you go to, you don't have like, like, Alwin Hills, Duarte?
Not on this presentation, no, but it is part of our...
So, what I did was, I took the proposed bill and divided by cost per gallon, I mean, 100 gallons for all the other six cities, or six areas, always came to, we are the lowest. Does that make...
For...
That doesn't help at all. So, that's not helping you at all?
Maybe it's helping you, I don't know, it's not helping me explain the, the rate design.
No, what I'm saying is that we are paying, I mean, by that, you know, we're paying 60 cents, 67 cents per gallon, while Duarte is also about 68, and Rio is 64, Alwin is 70, 79 cents, 81, I don't know, I'm just...
Yeah, and...
I mean, and then San Diego is paying 1.09, so...
Yeah.
Were we paying lower before, so that's why we have an increase now?
Were you paying more before?
We were paying less, were we paying less before?
The, the rates were, were pretty consistent, that's why it gets complicated because, and I appreciate you trying to help me, but I don't want to say something that implies that, yeah, you guys are getting some, you have to better...
A message is sent back, I think you got to look at us, we feel like you're, you know, like a public utility, you're serving us. And you said you have 25 employees in the area. You're part of a, a company that has 7,100 employees, $3.5 billion in revenue, $560 million in profits, and the annual report is talking about how you're performing both the S and P average and how dividends are going up. So, I hear what you're saying, and then I look at this data and I go, I wish I were a shareholder, but I'm not. So, so please, take Charles Schwanton, take, take, take the message back that, you know, you're talking about your corporate citizenship and you treat your customers first, doesn't feel like it, right?
I appreciate that, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
I guess we have no other options on our water source, do we?
Well, that's a separate investigation.
Well, whatever, that's true, because I think the answer's a no.
We can drill wells.
Shower, shower the gym, yeah.
So, you've got to try the toenails.
On the first page, there were some errors, and I don't know if you're using this PowerPoint for anything else?
Well, hopefully not.
Sure, I'm happy to make any edits that you have.
We don't have a San Marino Schools Festival, I don't know what that is. So, some of those...
I'll go back and take a look at that.
...are vengeful and incorrects.
Okay, thank you.
So, those aren't really things we're supporting here.
Sure, thank you.
And do we have any public comment, please, from members of the audience?
Anybody else?
What? They're, they're, they're getting their rain barrels up. All right, seeing none, I move to, oh, I need a motion to receive and file.
Where are we going to file? I'll move to receive and file.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to, Agenda Item 16, approval of resolution terminating... Another happy agenda item for us all, terminating default, terminating for default the public works construction agreement with Myers Construction for the Lacy Park restroom replacement project. To rest his, take it away.
All right, thank you, Mary Shepherd, Bobby. As you are aware, and as it pains me to report, the construction of the replacement restroom in Lacy Park has not progressed as planned, and it is over 250 days late. You approved a $337,400 contract with Myers Construction of Long Beach on November 14th, 2018, and we issued the notice to proceed on December 17th, 2018. The approved completion date, including weather delays from last winter, was April 30th, 2019. As of last week, Myers has completed most of the rough masonry and plumbing work. Work that remains includes the roof, finished plumbing, finished electrical, and painting. The contractor has been unnoticed since May pursuant to the contract that the city has been assessing $250 per day in liquidated damages, and that we are incurring expenses related to providing portable restrooms for park patrons far past the completion date. Myers has invoiced the city only $143,673, or 43% of the contract value. The city is currently holding $191,727 of the balance of the contract, and we fully intend to withhold the current amount of liquidated damages from any and all future payments. Although, although the department has made every reasonable contractual effort to get this contractor to complete the project, they have been unable or unwilling to provide sufficient resources to timely prosecute the project in a timely fashion. This is a distressing place to be, one that has impacted the enjoyment of our park even by our kids at the playground, and to get to tonight's recommendation, we have had to follow a diligent and procedurally technical process to build a strong record. In this situation, the construction agreement between the city and Myers Construction gives the city the authority to terminate the contract for default. The department is asserting the following reasons for default. One, Myers has failed to diligently prosecute the work to construct, to completion. Two, Myers has disregarded instructions from the city engineer to perform specific tasks requested by the city engineer. Three, Myers has failed to prosecute the work per the schedule. And lastly, Myers has failed to satisfactorily complete the items identified in three notices to cure issued by the department. If the city council approves terminating this construction contract for the reasons just listed, the next step will be to instruct the surety, Argonaut Insurance Company to proceed ahead with hiring a replacement contractor and completing the work in accordance with the plan and specifications. Argonaut will have 15 working days to prepare and provide for city approval their plan to complete the project and name the replacement contractor. The completion contractor will, at no additional cost to the city, finish the restroom project. Myers Construction and Argonaut have been duly notified of our recommendation to you tonight. If the city council agrees with our recommendation, your action tonight would be to adopt the attached resolution terminating the construction agreement with Myers Construction and directing your city manager to cause the completion of the restroom. This concludes the department's presentation.
Thank you very much, Director Jerome. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Wong?
No, no question.
Councilmember Jacob Baskin? None? Councilmember Wong?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Yiddy?
No questions.
I had one question, just, I was, it took, in this, your first background, when was the original, it said that the, because of, I think it was because of the, it was a rainy spring, it was adjusted to April 30th, 2019. What was the original 80-day count was supposed, when was it originally supposed to be completed?
April 16th.
Okay, so they were given some, and then I thought, just to clarify, that there was also a date of, at the end of June, I'm going to say June 29th, because that was my daughter's birthday, so I may be misremembering, but there was also a June date that you, deadline that you had asked them to comply with or something like that, a certain amount of work by that time to prove...
We did with the first notice to cure, give them five working days, and I believe the first notice to cure was in October, so there was a date in October for them...
But not over the summer.
But not, not over the summer, no. And then we gave them successive notices to cure with specific things they were supposed to complete or substantially complete within a certain number of days, and then they requested that they be granted an extension through December 23rd in order to prove to the city that they could complete the job and make good progress. They failed on that, and so we're here tonight.
And just to understand for the community more than the issues or, you know, the chain of events that you reflected in your report, why was there such a great lag time between April 30th, let's say, and the city taking action and issuing these notices, so to speak, legal notices not till October?
They were making general progress, it was not spectacularly fast, and it did look like from their discussions with us that they were going, they were completing jobs and they would be employing more, more staff. And so, as the city attorney will, will probably agree with, there's a certain process, you have to be very diligent in your record-keeping, you have to give them every single chance to fail, because they can always come back through their surety or through their legal representation and say, you're, you're terminating us prematurely, you need to give us enough chances. So, as painful as that is, we needed to give them enough chances and enough of their own self-imposed deadlines to either succeed or fail at, so that we could get here and be very confident that we can move on with the bonding company and they will accept your determination and move forward with the replacement contract.
Because I had to say, I was surprised, I thought there was a June, we were trying to get it done before the Fourth of July, I thought that was common knowledge and that they were unable to do that, and then thereafter, it kept going. So, I don't know if for future reference, there's a way for us to stay on top of projects in a better way, whether that includes somebody designated on your staff or an outside person, but to manage these so that they don't go on too long before we start sending out the notices and, and taking the legal steps, are, are really getting them to finish a project, that would be the best thing. But now we're left with a largely unfinished project, like more than a year later, and I would have, I think the community would have appreciated these notices and this action to take place in July, when it was already, they missed, what we...
But the notices started in July, it was quite a lengthy pick the trail of letters that went out. I mean, I think what you're saying is you had to do all of this to cover the city in terms of not...
I'm obliged to build a record of failure of performance on their part. If they get to the completion of, to the official completion date, the next day you say, well, you're not done and I'm going to terminate you, our legal counsel will probably say, well, that's not going to stand very well. And so, unfortunately, you, you do have to go through an extensive process, I've gone through this in other agencies where you just have to do the dance, you have to document everything, and you give them more than enough chances to be successful, and when they fail, then you go to this. This is a very big tool to use in your arsenal, not one that you want to, but when you get there, you have to make sure you have a very legally defensible record.
It's a version of progressive discipline. And, and you, I wish we, I wish we could get back and cost all the labor that you had to put into all of these communications, they are so... There are so many of them. They are so lengthy. I'm quite upset with this company that they couldn't have communicated with you earlier, and said, "This is over our head. We need to move on, and what else can you do?" That would have been the fair thing for them to do.
And also, so, to finish, the questions that I had were related to the additional time and costs by your department along the same lines that Councilmember Jacobowski, and the amount of time maybe even, I don't know, of our city attorneys in our planning and building had to really spend on this. That's a cost to the city of time and perhaps cost that would have been better spent elsewhere. So it's a negative in that way. And then there's the literal cost. Well, and there's also the maintenance of the old bathroom and the maintenance of the site where the portables, I don't know what the correct term is. I'm sure there's a fancy word for porta-potties, but that they are, you know, something that the community is extremely unhappy, and I just hear about it constantly, that they're still there. And it's costly to maintain the old bathroom, which now people are having to use, which is in poor condition, and your staff is...
So all the reason why we wanted to have this project. Those are all costs that we're going to chronicle, and when we come to the point where we're going to reconcile the final billing with the surety, we won't spend any more than the original contract amount. There's liquidated damages, which is very clear. We get to keep those. It's these other costs that we may have to do some negotiation on in order to resolve. What we want to avoid is any sort of litigation when a completed project. So these can drag on for years, and they can get caught up in court where now I just have a fenced-in area where I cannot work, so...
So are you saying then that the project will not start construction with the new surety? I mean, the hires, I know there's steps, but is all of that held up, so there'll be no construction on the...
We will tomorrow be communicating with the surety. The city attorney's office has provided me with an excellent notice to let them know it's time now for them to move up. We will start to do our meetings with them and get them on board as quickly as possible. We are allowed by our specifications and in the contract, if there's any site work we need to do to protect the public and protect the site while these negotiations are going on, we can do that and recover those costs.
But I'm not worried about costs. I'm talking now literally, when is this going to start?
We will know that once we send message if the council approves termination. Once we send message to the surety, then we'll start to get the timelines when they'll be back.
So is that, in your estimation, I have no idea. Are you talking that that process of negotiation and communicating with the surety, et cetera, and securing the site, doing whatever, that's a six-month process, or that's a month? I have no idea, or that's...
My estimate would be, it would be a month if they're open and they already realize that they need to step up. And we've been noticing them since July that this is the potential. It won't be a surprise. It'll be us now to be the bug to them and to get them wrapped up in this process, wrapped up and underway by the next 30 days.
Okay, okay. I understand. So then that's meaning then construction would embark, or then they also then... I just want the community to understand. Because I don't understand, and I'm here, and I, you know, get a lot more information than most people at home or the park users, right? So what are we talking about now for having a restroom completed?
So there is still probably 90 calendar days of real work to be done to finish the...
Calendar or work?
Calendar days.
Okay.
As opposed to, and we're not going to talk about working days, because right now they are on a calendar day schedule. So I did not want to confuse that, because the liquidated damages are still based on calendar.
Okay.
They still have about three months of work to finish.
May being delivered in construction.
Whoever the replacement contractor is. Depending on if Myers Construction has already ordered materials, and they can assume possession of that. Myers has told me they have it all. They had... They're storing it somewhere. They're ready to install it. I've heard that. So the main thing is that the surety has noticed, they then have 15 days to submit us a plan of how they're going to complete the project. When they have that, I can certainly broadcast that back out to the council and the community to let you know that this is the plan, and certainly we will look at getting it done much sooner than later.
Right, and I would appreciate that. I think that there's still some concern now we're starting over again. I know we're not literally starting over, but, you know, because we're going to miss April and June and July. Thank you. I would appreciate if you would update us or put something on the website and make an announcement at council meetings.
Certainly, absolutely.
I would appreciate that. I know many would. Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comments regarding agenda item 16? Seeing none? Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Or would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt resolution number R-20-01, terminating the construction contract between the city and Myers Construction for the replacement of the Lacy Park restroom.
All seconded?
All of you will second that?
All of us will second that. I think we have to have a vote call. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yee?
Yes.
Mayor Shepherd, Bobby?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we'll just continue on. Do we need a recess, or can we continue? Okay, agenda item 17, overview fiscal year 2020-21 budget process and confirmation of strategic plan, critical success factors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, this is a palate cleanser. This is a happy item. This is a good item. So we will all come back with thanks to your budget finance liaison, Vice Mayor Yee, Councilmember Jacobowski. We have worked with the budget process for the upcoming year. I just want to go through for you briefly, since it's almost identical to what we did last year with the under exchange, and then ask you about the critical success factors. So if you are so inclined and you're interested in turning to the process, which was the budget calendar, the budget process will begin relatively in earnest at your upcoming Friday, January 31st meeting. At that meeting, we will do what we did a year ago, which is present to you a status report on our current year programs, and we will begin the brainstorming process for potential next-year programs between San Marino, referring to its priority initiatives. So come prepared with your brainstorming hats on. We will provide you with sticker dots, and we will go forth. On February 12th, at next month's Wednesday night meeting, Finance Director Chung will take over the financial aspects of the budget presentation, will lead you through the mid-year budget presentation review, do a five-year financial forecast for you, and also give you a sense of projections for next year. Armed with that information, we will then get back together on February 28th, which is your February Friday meeting, and make some final selections of the priority initiatives that you'll be directing staff to include in their budgets for next year. This is one of the changes that we made on your Friday, March meeting. You will see the CIP. I say that that's a change, because that is one month earlier than you saw it last year. Last year, you saw that in April, so you're going to see it a little bit sooner. The Public Safety Commission will have a chance to review the draft CIP in February or March, depending on how their cycle runs, but we will have their feedback in time for your meeting on March 27th. And this is the other corresponding piece of the change. On April 24th, your Friday meeting in April, you will see a rough draft of the budget. You did not see that last year. Last year, what you saw in March was a high-level presentation for departments of what their priority initiatives might be, some ballpark numbers, but you did not see the entire budget. So this year, we're going to give to you a preliminary proposed budget. That will be your opportunity to do a high-level review or a line-item review, however you prefer and are comfortable, and give us some direction, and we will come back in May, and we will give you a proposed budget. And if all works magically well, which why wouldn't it, then we will be slated to adopt the budget in May with a month to spare, much like we did last year. I am happy to answer any questions about that if you would like. Before I ask the council liaisons if they have anything that they would like to add, I want to turn your attention to the next attachment, which is a reminder about the eight critical success factors that you as a council adopted when we did our strategic planning process two years ago. The question that you answered from these was, what are the things that we would need to have for our city to be and continue to be magnificently successful 10 years from now? And the eight things that you chose were engaged and connected residents, efficient, responsive, and effective city services, safe community, well-maintained infrastructure, fiscally responsible and transparent city government, attractive complimentary business district, inviting and relevant city facilities, and beautiful preserved single-family residential neighborhoods. It would be helpful for staff if you would confirm tonight that these are still the eight that you believe in for this year. If you want to make changes, certainly you can, but whatever these eight are or whatever the number ends up being will be the things that guide us in bringing to brainstorm items in two weeks at your Friday meeting. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to item budget liaisons to see if there's anything that they have to add.
Do you have four more items? I'm going to go silent.
No, I mean, I'm following last year's cross-socia, the understudy, and, you know. I'd like to thank you, still look the idea to get kind of a status report of what happened this year, so we have that foundation base, got this to focus on, and, you know, fresh up time, makes sense.
Do we have any other questions or comments? I do request also similar along the same lines. It helps me to see what was suggested, was adopted, it was last year, so I understand. Is there some point where, like the CIP, you know, we can get the list, or I could dig it out of some, you know, not very good finding things at this point?
Are you talking about CIP projects? Are you talking about priority initiatives? Or are you talking about both?
I'm talking about both. I always think it's better to have what we discussed in the prior, you know, even tonight.
Yes.
It helps me to understand.
We can find ways to work.
What we've already... I'd like to work that in.
That should come out of the status report here, if we try to do, if we accomplish.
You're asking though, even for what...
Even adopting the priority initiatives.
So we had a whole slew of things. You narrowed it down.
Right.
You're saying even what did you not include last?
Even the slew.
Yeah.
There was a... There was a list, and it was all encompassing, that I remember you produced, and then we focused, and I would like to know what were the other things that we had thought about as we went through the process before.
We can absolutely do that, for sure. And in fact, you may see us propose some of those very same things.
Right. Whether or not, but we also might want to propose some things that not carry. Or oppose. Okay. So I just would appreciate that in the early stages. Anything else? Nope. So this is a receivable file? Or adopt? Accept the budget calendar and confirm? You're right. Do we have any public input on this?
God, no.
I don't know if you have any, I just...
I know you're enjoying this as much as we do. Seeing none? The staff is recommending that the council accept the budget calendar and confirm the adopted critical success factors.
Can you move that? I don't know. I took a short nap.
I'll move that. We accept the budget calendar and confirm the adopted critical unless Susan or Ken would like to do so.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Word now, 18... Approval ordinance number 0-19-1935... 13, maybe it's an O. O-19-1355, amending San Marino City Code regulations for vacant residential or commercial property. Director Spun. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're here. And good night, Nancy. You're a stalwart.
Timer. No phone.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I apologize for my voice. I'm going to get over something. But if you recall, September 11th of last year, the city council meeting, staff presented the ordinance for adoption, first reading. Due to substantial changes presented by the council, staff was required to return to the drawing board and make several changes for future meetings and considerations. Although a majority of the ordinance did remain unchanged, several of the sections were amended, including language that houses... Including the language that essentially houses the lists with the police departments in order to avoid the public records or the public records request process. In addition, the use of uninhabitable, the term of uninhabitable was replaced with vacant homes. The amendment, the amended ordinance also included commercial properties as well. So we went ahead and looked at that, and we have the ability of also including vacant commercial properties to the program. Section C of the registration requirements now also includes additional requirements with respect to statements of the ownership, whether that's an LLC or some other type of ownership, they are now responsible for identifying themselves as part of the process. Lastly, the ordinance includes a violation section that references the administrative citation process. Under the proposed ordinance, failure to register a vacant property will be considered an infraction punishable by $100 fine. Any subsequent violation thereof of the same property increases the violation by $100 or so. For council's reference, staff has provided information in the staff report related to fees, fines, and the ability of taxing such properties. So I'll leave that for the staff report for the council and the public to review that. So with that being said, staff recommends the city council waive full reading of the ordinance and introduce a first reading by title only, ordinance number 191355. May I open for questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
I have no questions. I'm happy to see us amended, get it right. This is very important in this world, in what's happening with people squatting on homes and making sure that you protect the interest of anybody that owns property here in San Marino.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
I motion to... I have a question.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Since you chose to include the vacant property tax, and I'm surprised, I knew there were a few areas that had developed vacancy taxes. Can you also have the comment in the second paragraph, others find the tax unconstitutional as it goes against Prop 13. What is the most current, prevailing thought in the state of California, and have there been any lawsuits?
I have not heard of any lawsuits with respect to this process. The most latest direction towards this process in the city of L.A., where they're looking to incorporate similar procedures, but my understanding of that, of their direction by their council is to look for landowners of rental properties, to look for methods of collecting fees or fines or tax for those properties who... Or those owners who are leaving perfectly legalized rental properties vacant. A few years ago, San Francisco was looking at adopting a similar process, but in their legal review of the process, that is when they came up with the argument of Prop 13, whether it's constitutional or not. I have not heard of any latest updates with respect to how Oakland or Richmond or Vancouver's process is going, other than, of course, with Oakland, they are receiving a certain X amount of revenue with respect to the tax. But the city of L.A. is probably the most recent example of how the process is moving forward.
And would either... And this may be for Chief rather than you. Would either you or Chief, as long ago, have for us the current number of A, registered properties, and B, the estimated number that are not registered that are vacant?
I don't really have too much information on that.
I didn't get around to you back there.
I'm sorry. When did you start working for the Warren Company? Probably it's for the charging for finding out these vacant houses. We have not had any new ones reported in probably six to eight months.
And there certainly and totally appear to be newer vacant properties. Are you able to give us a number that you have registered?
Not right now, no. I wasn't prepared.
Would you be able to get that?
We will find it, find it to the council.
Thank you.
Answer the city now.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? I also just had a quick question regarding... Don't sit down. I also just had a quick question regarding, don't sit down. No, I don't know who this is. Is this an enforcement issue, and what are we going to do with implementing this? Because now we are going to have commercial properties as well. Obviously, it was going to require staff time of both the police department to continue the effort with regard to housing. I mean, unfortunately, this is eighteen on our agenda, but I think this is a really important issue for our city. We'd all like to go home, but I don't want to not focus on how are we going to implement this. Do you see this as, I shared responsibility for your two departments, but part code enforcement, part police, I assume, would do the?
This is primarily going to be a planning and building effort, where the piece that is really important with this ordinance is the violation section. Because it provides aid to enforcement, where we didn't have them passed. And so, of course, one could argue whether $100 is enough to sort of deal with the situation. We'll have to see about that. But primarily, this is going to be a code enforcement effort. There is going to be a heavy reliance on residents calling us in, letting us know that these properties are vacant. That'll be a much different situation for commercial properties, because we can actually, we have the manpower to do that ourselves. Especially with the economic development process, we can do that ourselves. But to answer the question, this is primarily going to be my department. But housing, the list, of course, indeed.
Right. And so, do you envision that this will be something that will get in the newspapers, and then people will contact you by email, and then you will proceed to pass it to the code enforcement officer, who will then send out, for example, a notice letter, is vacant, to whatever the registered owner asks for response? I mean, do you have that charted out? And will you make it clear whether it's on our website or someplace so people know how to report what they suspect is a vacancy?
Part of the process is going to be marketing this code, of course, and we have a strategy for how we're going to get it out to the public. As far as practice is concerned, when we receive an inquiry about a vacant property, we would conduct a follow-up, or we would conduct an inspection, and then later on follow-up inspection. Of course, if the owner fails to register, then we have our violation section to fall back on. What I've done in the past is, we created a form on the city website so that folks can actually register through that process. Unfortunately, we don't have an ability of online payments, so they can certainly still register their properties, but will have to come in to pay. So there is a game plan to how to manage this, and we're just going to have to sort of practice it moving along.
All right. Thank you very much. And I would appreciate it if there would be a report maybe in six months plus as to whether the numbers are, or whatever you think is reasonable, whether you have had registrations, and now that this is operating, because we do also have to consider, we have fines potentially, fees potentially, whether those are also covering our costs, or whether we want to go down a different thing altogether. So we sort of need to see how much time it's taking, are people actively doing this once you roll it out, is my concern. So I would like this as something, you know, mid-year, to see how this is working in terms of you guys and your efforts. Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Thank you, Chief. Do we have any public? Yes.
Yeah, I'm watching.
Mrs. Manning, you're still here.
I know.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty, starting now.
You made a tape team.
Kelly Manning, twenty-three oh five Brentford Road, and resident fifty-eight years now. Shit. So vacancies in the city, I'm told that the ordinance, I have not read it, I apologize, you had seven hundred and sixty pages, and I haven't read any. But I'm told that it specifically does not, it excludes construction where there's vacancy, correct? Okay. That's separate ordinance, so you guys will, all right. But there is a residence, and I'm talking specific, I know there's a reporting system that is going to be put into play, but I believed a year ago, when the ordinance was first initiated, and I guess it wasn't passed, there was a reporting system where at the time we could call in, and we could report vacancies even at that time.
I don't think we?
Did fines ever get implemented? Or no fines have been collected to date?
No.
We have the ordinance.
We have the ordinance, and we can fee.
Okay.
And we, the amendment was not adopted, because we still had some questions.
And so that's why we're amending and adding now.
Right, and the tax.
So we're now adding fines, et cetera, making it extended to commercial properties as well. Things like that have changed, and that's what's taken the last couple months, is to work through that process, to do our comments, and the attorneys, and then planning commission and now that to us.
Okay. And will there be public record to who's registered?
No, that's part of the issue, that will be private and hanging out with the police department.
So somebody could call five times for the same house, you know, twenty-five times because we don't know.
They will know.
They will know, yeah, right.
It's not a problem.
Right, exactly. Okay. Yeah, so there is a home at twenty-two, or twenty-two fifteen Sherwood, that went through years and years of construction with the fines, wrong servant, past fines, five thousand plus. And now it's through the vacancy. So nothing has been enforced at all at this time with that resident, who is still the owner who did the construction, the house didn't change hands, is still the same owner. It's on the corner of San Marino Avenue. So that house is vacant, but yet no fines are implemented yet, until this ordinance is passed. No fees. I mean, I guess she would have possibly paid the registration, and she could say vacant forever.
Well, she will now, if that's true, and that's confirmed with the process that we have developed, the idea is that they will go through the proper process with a legal notice to the honor of record, and there, and thereafter, she will get the initial fine of $100, and then it will go up to $200, et cetera. So there is a structure, once we've gone, this has become adopted, and then they can act on information. Is that fair to say?
All right. I'll be very anxious to see the public notifications and the electric sign out in front of the city hall that will tell us all about it. Didn't quite work for the treaty ordinance, but I have better hopes for the, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none?
I move to waive full reading in this proposal, and by title only, ordinance number O, dash nineteen thirteen fifty-five, an ordinance to the city of San Marino amending regulations for vacant properties.
I'll stick to that.
If I may, just because there's a discrepancy, the type of the ordinance, as in ordinance of the city of San Marino, amending of San Marino, we just want to vote by amending the regulations for vacant residential and commercial property.
As, I adopt that.
I agree, I'm amending, I second that. Do we need to, roll the vote please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yee?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepherd Roni?
Yes. Thank you very much. Passes. Agenda item nineteen, approval of the economic development program incentives.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff and the economic development team continues to move forward with the economic development program. At the November two thousand and nineteen meeting, staff provided the council and the public with an update on the progress of this program. During this presentation, staff provided the council with many programs, including a fee incentive program and a facade improvement program. With the blessing of the economic development team, excuse me, staff is ready to move forward with three types of pilot programs that are aimed to jumpstart the revitalization of the commercial districts. The first program consists of a fee waiver. The conditional use permit tool is the application necessary to obtain, to open up a new business such as a restaurant or a cafe. The pilot program is set to waive this fee, which may result in a total savings for an applicant of upwards of $3,000. Staff will begin this year with three applications that are in the pipeline to receive such benefits, and of course, more to come.
Restaurant?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Since one of the goals is to attract a grocery store as well as an anchor to Huntington Drive, staff has set to waive the application fee for this type of use as well. The wayfinding signs, which are also considered directional signs, will also be introduced as a pilot program. Although the economic development group set aside approximately $10,000 for the program, we went out to bid and found that it's actually going to only cost us $8,000 for the signs. I'll reference the wayfinding program attached to the staff report for the actual locations of those signs. The final program is the facade improvement program. Because this program requires significant time for administering, staff will like to introduce this program as another pilot program. Current funding would only offer one project this fiscal year, and with this one project, this will be treated as our case study moving forward into next fiscal year. Staff will select the finalists of this specific property based off whether the project is shovel-ready, and also based off of the condition of the building. As part of the facade improvement program, if you notice, there is a fee waiver associated with the design review fee, so any applicant who is looking to do a facade improvement program, the fees for design review will be waived as part of the program. So with that said, staff recommends the city council direct staff to waive the application fee for a period of one year for proposed restaurant uses and grocery stores uses, or expansions of such uses, where such uses are intended to occupy the existing building, and authorize staff to move forward with the pilot program. Staff purposely intended to be very specific with the direction as to provide some checks and balances and controls to the money. Otherwise, it sort of could open up this benefit to everyone without really understanding the true fiscal impact. So that is the reason for the very narrow recommendation, and so I open up for questions of the council.
Councilmember Wong?
No questions.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No question.
Councilmember Tal?
I have no questions. No questions.
Vice Mayor Yee?
Please welcome her.
Thank you. I know a lot of work is bound into this, so I compliment you. And the vice mayor, as well as councilmember Jacobowski, working with the committee of residents, business owners?
May I give a quick shout-out, only because we have met a number of times, and these are both residents and business owners who are giving freely of their time, and the progress is just phenomenal under Aldo's leadership. You will just be in awe within twelve months of what is going on in this city. Linda Zadoian, who owns the San Marino Cafe, Shelley Boyle, a resident who is very involved in marketing, Karina Medallion from Single Stone, Kelly Carpiak from San Marino Toy and Book, Nancy White from New Creation Picture Framing, and Isaac Hung, who owns a number of businesses, have been relentless in their time and their effort in giving to this effort, and also Stephanie, who works with Aldo. So Ken, I think I speak for both of us when we say this is one of the most exciting things going on in town right now. Congratulations to you all on all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Go.
Ms. Manning?
Not comment, but a question. There was an article in the Tribune on this committee, and again, the work they've done, and a comment in regards to not only request to waive the fee for permit, but also the timing of the amount of days that the fee would require, that that's a lack of incentive. If you could find somebody to come in, they might want to come in now, but if they have to wait ninety days, or what is the current timing for permit before they can, you know, break ground?
Well, to break ground, that's the, that's a?
But you have to move in.
It's typical, so a typical entitlement process will take about two months. And so for an applicant to go through the entitlement process and eventually move into the business, that includes not only the entitlement process, but also construction, which we refer to as the tenant improvement, and that can take up to six months. So you're probably looking at, if things move efficiently, you're probably looking at about eight months to move into the property.
Question? And once they start, I mean, they don't, the fee's already waived?
Right, as soon as they apply to the department, if it's a use that is meeting this direction, we will waive the fee.
But what is the timeframe in you making that decision?
It really comes down, it really comes down to if the use is a restaurant, or a cafe, or a grocery store that is looking to occupy or expand within an existing building, that will satisfy the intent of the fee waiver.
So it's determined by the type of business and the desirability of that business as in, in the mixture of our corridor overall?
Correct, right.
So you track those things to then act on?
We do, yes.
So it's not a ninety-day waiting period, or anything of that nature?
No waiting period, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments or questions? Thank you so much. Seeing none, do we?
Go ahead, please.
I move to direct staff to waive the conditional use permit application fee of $3,615 for a one-year period, starting January one, 2020, for proposed restaurant and grocery store uses, or expansion of such uses, where such uses will occupy an existing building and authorize staff to implement a facade improvement plan and wayfinding sign plan as pilot program.
I'll second.
We need to have a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yee?
Yes.
Mayor Shepherd Roni?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Thank you very much, Director Sanino, for your work on this, as Susan, my councilmember Jacobowski, and to all the committee, please give him a thanks. Moving on to agenda item twenty, appeal of conditional use permit, number CUP nineteen dash eleven, design review numbers DRC eighteen dash sixty-eight H P, DRC eighteen ninety-nine, and DRC eighteen one hundred and one, dash one hundred and one, twelve sixteen Mesa Road. That's enough, okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is, as before, the city council has an appeal of the planning commission decision to approve a new house at twelve sixty Mesa Road. At the August twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen planning commission meeting, the planning commission approved a proposal to construct a new two-story house, a cabana, and a new garage. Prior to this decision, the planning commission conducted public hearings on June twenty-six and on July twenty-fourth. At either meeting, there was no public opposition to the project. Subsequent to the August decision, the planning commission, a representative of the owners at twelve seventy Mesa Road to the neighbor submitted an appeal to the project. The neighbors expressed concerns about the lack of privacy with the west facade of the proposed home. Despite multiple attempts by the architects to remedy these concerns, the representative and owners, the neighbors, continued to express concerns about the window windows and the balcony on the west facade of the property, or of the proposed home. Staff's initial analysis of the project initially found that the home was not compatible with the neighborhood because of the architectural style chosen by the architect. In fact, prior to the June meeting, staff recommended the architect simplify the design to reduce the eclectic feel. It was at the June planning commission meeting where the architect was encouraged by the planning commission to enhance the style and to reintroduce those elements that staff was concerned about. The project was eventually continued to the August meeting due to mass and scale concerns of the planning commission. With the modifications presented by the architect, staff and the planning commission were eventually able to support the project again, because based off the design of the home, the mass and scale of the home, and the other various elements of the proposed design, staff was able to satisfy the legal findings under the CUP and under the, under the design review actions. So in accordance with the code, the council has four actions as identified, or four options as identified in the staff report. Staff is recommending to the council option A, which is to affirm the decision of the planning commission. So if this is, if this holds, denied, or canceled, this project will be approved and allowed to move forward. So with that being said, I open for questions.
I just have a question. Could you confirm to me that all appropriate notices were given for the hearings and for tonight?
Yes, there was. Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes, did the owner ever contact this neighbor? I mean, did they ever meet?
Well, my understanding is that the representatives and owners, the neighbors, they didn't play a role to the project until the project was approved by the planning commission.
Prior to that?
Prior to that, prior to, prior to June, for July, August, we never really? Prior to them, prior to, prior to June, for July, August, we never really knew who, knew where they were, who they were. They never tried contacting the city. My understanding is, and I'll let the architect answer this, I'm not sure whether they reached up to that point.
Yes, I have a question. There's a diagram and it shows screening landscaping that's proposed that would be on the west side where the balcony was removed, right?
Yes.
On the east side, I drove by there, isn't there a screening that exists, a landscape screening that exists already?
Yes.
And is that cypress that are there?
It does appear to be cypress trees from what I recall seeing.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yee?
All right, so staff is comfortable that satisfies all order?
Yes, yes.
And it passed the design review and the planning commission?
This, this project only required planning commission approval and it did pass this.
And what was the vote on that?
I believe... I don't believe it was unanimous. I believe it was, it was a form of line.
And on the neighbor approval objection letters here, I see three, three, zero objections and eight non-responses.
Right.
Do you know if the non-responses just weren't home or how were the charges?
I would let the architect answer that question.
Right, and I also noticed, I did have a question as well, just so I understand, because I think notice is a big issue here, because there seems to be two notice periods. One, if you go to page 660 in our binder, talks about neighborhood approval objection as of July 18, 2019. And then a few pages earlier, at 652, it talks about neighbor approval objection letter notice, which are the notices of June 20, 2019. And again, the number even changes. Well, we have, that was the first round, and then with three approved and eight no responses. But there's still such a huge amount of no response.
Right.
And is this, and unlike some of them that I've seen in recent meetings where they list attempts and times that is not required to say what day and what time, was it an attempt to give notice or the method of giving notice that's not required?
It is required, even though this went to the planning commission, they are required to supply us with the letters that the neighbors have signed. The ones that they were not able to get, they're supposed to supply to those as well, identify the attempts that they made. And we have an internal policy that requires at least two attempts that they make to show, to show us that they've, they've had reasonable attempts to notify the neighbors. The code only requires that, in fact, is to demonstrate that there's reasonable steps to take to notify the neighbors. And so we've, we've had to adopt our own internal policy for how to make that sort of more transparent. And so they've, they've in fact done that.
Is there, I guess I'm missing it in this packet, or it's not in this packet, of course, tonight, I'm not sure which, is there a list of dates and attempts that were made to reach those no-response sevens or eights? I don't see it here.
I, I have to go through the file, but I'm sure the architect can probably provide some information about that.
That would be helpful, because I do think if you read the letter of the appellant and taking that as, I don't know where it is, I'm sorry, page 639, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking for, where's the...
This is 641.
It is 639?
In 2020.
I was talking about, okay, 641. Is it, so, and that's an October 3 letter, is that not the appellant? What is the difference between you, are these written by the same party? No, it's one's by Jean Ni, I may be mispronouncing it, I'm sorry. And one is by the owner, which is with the last name of Gu, which is the homeowner that Ni, maybe Ni, is, is representing, correct?
Yeah, but I've always dealt with the representative who's here in the audience, I've never dealt with the owner.
Okay. And they were talking about, and there I thought it was that they did not know about this till after the fact, this project? Or there was some confusion?
Right, there's something good that I'm sure she can provide, the appellate can provide some information about as far as how they figured out about the project.
And, but my question is, did staff ever look to see in the records that were provided to you whether notice and what the attempts were made on this particular?
I'd have to look at the file to see exactly how it, how it played out.
You don't know?
I don't know off the top.
At the top of your head, right? Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much. Next, we need to have over the public hearing and have...
Two?
We have people here representing both. And so I guess we will say seven minutes in total for each side, and they can divide it how they wish in terms of speaking to us. And then we'll have public comment after that, and there'll be other people who wish to speak on this of two minutes apiece.
Love it.
All right. Thank you. And so the appellant?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and everyone. My name is Jean Ni. I am the sender, the homeowner, 1217 Mesa Road. She apologized that she cannot come attend the meeting today. We've been told that the meeting was held by December 10. However, they postponed to January 8. Even that, the homeowner wrote four letters to City Planning. And also after that, we have a communication with Robert Taylor. The letter each at September 26, October 3, and October 8, and October 10. And I believe your, your file has September 26 and October 3. And here I prepare the rest, the two letters for if you, in case you don't have it.
We do have an October 8 letter from you.
Oh, yeah. October 8, October 9, which is Robert's response, and October 10, our response, our response. And that's, we didn't get a final conclusion, so that's why we like to...
One more? Sorry. I passed mine down. Thank you very much. Oh, and also we need one for the record, if you don't mind, of any material that I've handed out from the city.
In the four letters, Mrs. Ku stated very clearly what are her points and what are her resolution. But unfortunately, I should say, the architect, Robert Taylor, does response. We, you can see the first page, Taylor, he agreed to remove the balcony. The house like that, from the beginning to the end, the front bedroom has two windows. Right now, currently, we have two windows, watch this side. Right now, I have eight windows on the second floor, the first two windows in the front bedroom, and then three windows on the hall, stair, stair, high ceiling stairway, and then bathroom window, and then two windows on the back bedroom, and then balcony. It's lens so long. So the eight windows definitely watch the property. Mr. Taylor says they'll be set back a lot, but we cannot imagine how far ours. And is that really block the view? Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous.
That's okay.
Okay. And then we mentioned about some resolution. We appreciate Mr. Taylor remove the balcony in the very end. And, but my client, not my client, the owner, want the, the front bedroom or the window on the second floor can reduce the higher window sill up to five feet. So they can still look at the driveway and their driveway backyard. But we want the, she want to make a good relationship with the neighbor, but she also wanted the neighbor respect her privacy. And also, and also because the front bedroom and the back bedroom each has the window face the front and the back, so it's better for the, is for the grace windows to meet the city requirement. Because they, Taylor says the window has to be safety cam coming out grace if something happened. But each bedroom it does has the window facing each at the front and back. So we want they get a, each room have sunshine enough, but also protect our privacy. All right. In the end, Mr. Ku wanted me stress to the council, he says he wish the city to preside over justice in the, this issue to treat each homeowner equally. So she would like the city to consider her, her request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ni.
One more thing, sorry. I do talk to Rob, she says the window she designed is meet to fit the house's style. But consider the house's style and the owner's privacy, we should pay more attention on the owner's privacy. And this home built by 1930s, sitting there for almost 90 years, quiet, humble there. We don't want to be bothered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ni. Now we have the architect.
Yes, my name's Rob Taylor with Taylor-Cuddy Architecture. I think Ms. Ni's last comment about the architecture is a good springboard for what I would like to say tonight. The staff and the design team and the planning commission through the design review process worked very hard to develop complimentary and high-quality foresighted architecture for, for all of the homes that go through this process. We went through three different hearings at each evolution, changes were made in response to commissioner comments and staff direction. This is an Italian-style architecture to have one side of the building look greatly different than other sides of the building, whether it's this style or any other style, I think would be refused by the commissioners that look to these applications. And so at the time I was speaking with Ms. Ni, we had already gained the approval of the project. And so to some extent, and I think staff will bear me out on this, I'm not in a position where I can offer to Ms. Ni that I can change something. In fact, it's specifically prohibited in the application of design review approvals. I would like to point out a couple of things. One is that the facade of the structure that she is speaking of is 24 feet from the side property line. This is a zoning district that has a minimum 20-foot side yard setback, and it's a relatively narrow lot, so the building is kind of compressed into the middle of the site. Unlike the structures that are there right now, which, which are existing non-conforming structures, the, there's a very fairly limited footprint that we could, we could build on here. The heights have been reduced, the style was worked on, the, a number of reductions were made to respond to concerns that the commissioners had. And I felt like this was, as usual, a very rigorous and demanding process of the design team and our clients. And I thought that we had achieved everyone's goals in that, in that effort. I did go on each time, actually in each of two sequential Fridays personally to all of the neighbors, and including this, this particular house, which, which I believe is vacant and for rent at this time. But there is a doorbell, a buzzer, a security gate, as there are many in the neighborhood. There's, there's an opportunity to push the doorbell, and what, what that does is it actuates a voicemail system, just like you would on any phone. On each of, each of the occasions, I left my contact information and told them what I was there for. I don't, I don't, I can't attest to whether this information got to Ms. Ku or not. As I mentioned, I don't think she lives there. So I believe that I made my best effort to contact everybody in, in the legal neighborhood. There were one or more elderly people whose homes were answered by servants. There's one house that's vacant and under construction at the corner of Oak Road and Mesa. And then there's, there's at least one, one across the street and one house aside that has an inoperable gate that you can't get in, nor can you buzz it. I did write down all of the times of my visits, which were, like I said, on sequential Fridays, at a reasonable time that one would expect people to be home within 15 minutes either side of 6:00 PM. And so I, I think there, to be sure, there are perhaps other ways that one could do public notice. Mailing is common among many jurisdictions, and believe me, I would love it if the city would go to a mailing system to do that because it is sometimes difficult to reach people, and it's sometimes awkward in the sense that I have to go up as a stranger, and they don't know if I'm a vendor or not, what do you want? You know, and I gotta show you plans, the city makes me show you plans. And so there, there are probably other ways that that might be more successful if the council wanted to examine that in the future. But I do think that some of the suggestions in the, in the letter, really, I don't think are reasonable in terms of the proximity of the structure to the side yard property line, the distance between the buildings, which I believe is in excess of 70 feet, a very measured parallel to our facade. There is a pool there. I, I did offer to plan some screening landscaping, I did offer to remove the balcony, but I think that short of one or more of those efforts, I think we're feeling like we're within our rights to develop this project the way it has been proved. And I introduce Dante Colombati, who grew up in this house, and might want to say a couple of things.
Sure.
Is there any questions from...
Okay, so why don't you speak? I think there's like a little bit of more than a minute left. And introduce us, and then we can have discussion if...
Councilmembers, thank you, everybody. My name is Don Tapolombati. I am the son of Kathy Nina Colombati. Unfortunately, couldn't be here, my, my mother is critically ill. So yes, you know, it's, no, I'm just here again just to vouch, you know, hey, I mean, we approved it, it's a beautiful house for my family, it's a house I've always wanted for my mom and my dad and my brother. You know, it's, it's hard to say, you know, we have a great relationship with our neighbors. I know, I know definitely four of them. For sure, I've never met the neighbor to our left, which is the client, the realtor's client. The house has been vacant, it's on boot net for lease, it's been married for four months. I always do, so I...
What was the last statement I've been hearing?
Dante Colombati.
It's always dark.
It's always, always dark, there's no one there, no one. And so I'm just testing to, you know, I've been, our family's been a resident for 45 years, my grandmother's 55. Grew up in the, in the San Marino, huge fight school district, the Titans. And so, you know, all in all, I just wanted to fill this out for my family, and I hope you guys make the right decision, as much as I love hearing about the slideshow. As much as I love hearing about the slideshow, the power of the water, the water. I mean, if I could give another one for the third time.
We don't need that.
Um, but, um, all in all, I just wanted to, you know, help to build my parents' house.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the background, a background. Thank you for speaking. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and we will have our discussion. Uh, council member Wong.
I think the architect, you know, the owner, they have compromised. They removed the balcony. And, you know, I think that the neighbor should compromise. So they, they wanted to step back. And, uh, you know, and then it has been vacant too. You know, where's the, where's the owner now?
The owner right now in China.
For me, this whole decision rests on reasonable effort to notify the legal neighbors. And, um, with Ms. Nee saying that the owner is in China and the person's next door and the architect saying that the home had been dark. Um, they certainly had the opportunity to respond to this matter as it was being heard before the planning commission. Um, I'm extremely impressed by the architect's attempts to develop a compromise on this matter. And, um, at this point, particularly in view, the reason for asking my question about the cypress, um, they are fast growing. Um, I did observe them on the other side of the property and they can quickly become quite tall. Um, Mr. Sontas, how, how, how large of a tree would be easily plantable there? If there were to be a cypress? What size box?
Yeah, it's about a twenty-four inch box.
And about how tall would that be to start?
Yeah, I initially said it could be built seventy, but it could be ten, ten, fifteen feet in height.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, I think that helps me in making my decision. Um, the fact that, you know, the contractor had attempted to be reasonable in compromising, that a homeowner was not available. Um, I do believe that the home apparently is dark and that the contractor tried. I think that the cypress would be appropriate remedy at this point. So I would be in favor of holding the planning commission.
Uh, councilmember Wong, please.
Can I ask Mr. Tyler a question? Is the current house, is that a two-story house right now?
Existing, yes.
So can, can they see the swimming pool?
Yes.
Yeah, there's pools on most of the properties in this neighborhood. Uh, and I think the pattern is very common that from a second story view, you would have, you would have a view into somewhere's pool area. Uh, certainly, um, people can see into the pool that's there right now. On our property.
Yeah, from your, from this property, you can see.
The neighbors can see from my property right now that we can see their pool for the long, by all way. And the neighbor next to me, you can look into our pool for a long time.
This way it's laid out, the location.
Exactly, same way, same amount. There's only.
So it's a pre-existing condition?
Pre-existing condition.
But is the second, but the second floor?
The hearing is closed.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Tong?
Um, excuse me, I'm sorry. It, um, based on everything I've, I've heard tonight, including looking at the fact that the property, the actual physical location, the buildings on the applicant's design are actually further from where they're existing today. I would have no problem affirming the action of the commission without any further ado.
Vice Mayor Nee?
I can agree. I agree. You know, appreciate the work of the staff and the commissioner respect. Uh, councilmember Jacobowski's perspective on this with her experience, so I can agree with this.
Can I have a last comment?
No, I'm sorry. The comment period is closed and you had the additional times. Um, I, too, have, um, great faith in the process. Um, and I know that the planning commission has reviewed this repeatedly and worked with the architect as well as the family to get their wishes of how to build their property. And also the neighborhood accountability is one of those criteria. And I believe that it was met in this regard when I see the project and what. I do have privacy concerns and I appreciate the effort. I think the screening of the additional hedge, as my fellow council member pointed out, would be a nice addition and would provide a greater amount of privacy in that regard for both of you. Um, so I would like to see that going forward, but I appreciate the effort that you've made. And also the notice is an ongoing issue and I do think that's bigger than this project in general, um, that we do need to consider as a body. Um, because we should send out a mail as well as have somebody walk around. I would like to avoid problems like this. And I'm not saying I absolutely think that the effort was made here. But in the future, I think that we need to have that system so that's not reflective of your efforts. But just as a, as a rule for our city, there should be a mail mechanism perhaps as well as the efforts made. But we can deal with that at a later time. Or if it comes from the planning commission, from their agenda.
Right. Do we have a motion?
I move to affirm the action of the commission.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it then.
May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tong?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nee?
Yes.
Mayor Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-two, that's right. It was covered up by, it was, it was gonna be twenty-two because we had that pleasure already.
Twenty-one. Twenty-one and we're running twenty-two, correct. And Ms. Kance?
Twenty-one, not two.
This is item twenty-two, interim ordinance regulating accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Mayor Shepard Rami. Sorry. Um, I'm.
You were moving up today.
I'm there. He was there earlier. I'm December eleventh, the city council adopted interim ordinance pursuant to the provisions of the government code regulating accessory dwelling units to comply with the state laws that became effective on January first. This ordinance is necessary to extend those provisions another ten months and fifteen days, which will allow the planning commission and the city council to conduct, during those public hearings, uh, to consider the amendments to the municipal code. Uh, these amendments are consistent with the council adopted in December and continue those amendments forward, meaning that, for example, it includes the provisions that require such units to be adopted rented for periods not less than ninety days and also prevent second-floor accessory dwelling units, which are either attached or detached and not located entirely within an accessory structure. So our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing this evening and then adopt the ordinance that extends the interim ordinance for another ten months and fifteen days. I'm happy to answer it.
Councilmember, I don't know if it was last. Uh, I'm looking there a lot. Councilmember Tong?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Wong?
I have no question.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No question.
Councilmember, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor. And no questions. Seeing none, we need to open public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have anybody who would like to speak at our public hearing on this item? We have a taker.
Listen, please. Look, two re comments. I read this.
I'm sorry, I'm still not being clear enough. This is just on this one item.
I know.
Okay.
I read this. We do, we do notice on this issue. And I see a lot of problems. I realize that this is a state demand thing, trying to, um, residential housing in cities like San Marino and Krampus, the brown units. But I think that it's too early to tell. I realize you haven't public comments, but such as some issues such as square footage of a house versus a lot, setbacks, uh, these are things that are a major issue. And then there's the issue of the house is sold, what carries forward to a new owner? What happens if the owner decides no longer to rent the property? And you have, what do you have a vacant unit? Or you have something that the owner can use as additional occupied space? I think these are all issues that have to be worked out. And it's going to take a lot, a lot of time and it's going to be a problem long range because it's going to involve a lot of lawsuits. You know, I think we need to take more time on this thing to establish exactly how we're going to approach it and force it in, the long-term impact of this thing on the whole city. I saw this spot zoning pop up in Alhambra years ago. They decided to let down the unit, drop them soon, but establish one residence around the community and basically destroy the whole city into a brown complex. And I can see that happening here. And I think that's what the state wants still. But we got to stop it somehow. I don't know what we've also, whatever means, also establish some of these points I mentioned. What's going to happen when this happens or that happens? So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this agenda? Seeing none, I'll go back to close the public hearing and go back to our discussion.
Well, we have to do this tonight and to Mr. Rock's point, we are going to have to spend the time to make sure that we get it right over the next ten months and fifteen days. Hopefully it won't take that long, being that we've gotten everything out of the way for the year tonight. We, we, we have plenty of time to work on that.
We should, thank you.
Yeah, I know. Um, but no, we have to do it unfortunately. And I think I made my point clear on the way the state is directing this. I won't waste any more time.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Um, I concur. I had mentioned this to a partial group before. I had been the alternate representative to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government. And there's thirty-two cities represented in this group. And with the exception of San Marino, Bradbury, and Lockham out of Flintbridge, both of which do not attend, but the other remaining cities regularly attend. The remaining cities are very, very much in favor of more ADUs and more units. And at the last meeting I attended, the discussion was around how to meet with Senator Portentino to get him to change his mind on this matter because, of course, he is joining in San Marino and how he feel. So that might be a good place for people to go who feel strongly about this because I was the only person in the room who felt as I did about these ordinances. And that's a large crowd.
And by the way, I did find the, uh, the website. It's livablecalifornia.org. And that is the organization that is going after these type of changes.
I want to commend the council and the planning department for being on top of this. Let's move.
No comments?
And my only comment is to Gina. Unfortunately, we got to adopt something because if we're there, we get the absolute worst. We get the state rules. Uh, so that's why we're acting this way, in order to cover us for the interim until we have a full flush down. Uh, and whether, we still have to meet the state guidelines in some respects. But this is better than not having anything and then having the, their ordinance be our emergency ordinance effectively. So that's a, that's a bit of background. Um, do we have a, uh, a motion? I move to read only by, I move to read by title only, wait for the reading, and adopt ordinance number zero dash twenty, oh, I took it again, my apologies. Ordinance number O dash twenty dash thirteen sixty dash U. And ordinance of the city of San Marino extending interim ordinance number O dash nineteen dash thirteen fifty-nine dash U. And amending the city's regulations regarding accessory dwelling units, also known as second units or ADUs, and declaring the urgency thereof. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tong?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nee?
Yes.
Mayor Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Question passes. Now we have, uh, written communications. Are there any written communications? Congress waiting. Do we have any council reports? Uh, the city council calendar, we'll talk about that. That's a long time from now. Do we have public comments? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for patiently waiting to the evening.
I have a couple of things. As we know, Cal Pers is our greatest unfunded liability.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I wanted to discuss this. We have eight weeks before we go, basically a week before we go to the console to the election. And the big issue here is school bond issues. They're opposing two hundred million dollars and the, uh, there's no telling how they're going to plan to issue it over a period of time. But I got the information on this stuff and I was very disturbed by it because basically, you know, they passed these three bond issues back in the early century, uh, nineteen ninety-eight, ninety, ninety. And total amount of the principal of those bonds, about fifty-three million dollars. And those bonds were primarily used for construction purposes. And our buddies Andy and Scott, uh, were pushing this, uh, other issue for construction. And they told everybody that it's only going to cost them a few pennies a day. Well, they're very clever. They back-end loaded a thing. And so if you back-end load a thing, uh, it did cost only a few pennies to start. But right now, the balance on that with six years remaining, if you start in twenty-twenty, is about thirty-four million dollars to pay off the balance of a fifty-three million dollar initial bond issue because of the way they funded it. And the principal amount turned out to be about a hundred and eight million dollars worth, Andy. Now, I see this thing happening now because it's a different situation. If you read this thing here and you can give a copy of it over to the school district, having already resolution number twelve, and they have, uh, information on how it's going to be spent and what have you. And if you look at this thing, basically what they've come up with is not a construction thing, but it's an operation and maintenance bond issue. And basically, the money would be spent almost on a daily basis of operation and maintenance costs. So what I see happening here is, you know, when we passed Pop thirteen, the legislative answer to this was partial taxes and bond issues that didn't require our vote of the public. And we got stuck on that with this Cal Pers one with seven and a half million dollars, of which two and a half million is still pending. But it was later declared unconstitutional and, of course, we had the public safety tax. And that was warranted in a sense, three to four million dollars. They told us it was going to be spent on this police and fire. Well, that was okay in the sense that that's what you spent. But what it did is it liberated the general fund money that was in that amount to be used for other purposes. And this has been basically a scheme that everybody's been using with partial taxes and other things. And that is that they free up the money. And I see that happening here. They tell you in this thing here that they're not going to spend any money for salaries or for pensions. But what they're doing, by putting all the money they would be spending in operations and maintenance, and the bond issue, they're liberating all that money for any purpose that they would want to do, including, uh, bondage, I mean, including pensions and salary. salary increases or anything else. And also, there's a situation here where they just tell you that they're going to, they're going to, oh, the assessment. You talk about assessments. Well, under Prop 13, which is under attack right now by the legislature again, it's a valid issue too. Property taxes are based on, everybody is a recipient of Prop 13. And whether you bought your property 30 years ago or whether you bought yesterday, your tax basis is purchase price or purchase price plus improvements you've been over the years in exchange of assessed value. They talk about assessed value here and it's unclear whether they're going to try and assess this thing. They say they're going to charge you 6% on $100 of bonds and that it's going to not improve and increase your taxes. I don't see that that's possible, that can happen. They're talking here about this thing and it's been matured in the years, '57 and '58 and they're talking about the fact that the principal amount may be something like 400 and, I think it's 400, I don't know what the exact amount is, but it's over $400 million on the thing for the total cost if it goes to maturity. And they don't tell you what they're going to do with the $34 million they still have left to fund on the old bond issues. So I think that we've got some problems here that, and I realize that you folks are two separate political entities, but the fact of the matter is we're all city taxpayers and if they fund this thing and spend all this money, it's going to affect the whole finances of the city, including not just the school district, but what you're doing here. My purpose in discussing this thing is that I think the city, we focus individuals or collectively, should come out opposed to this thing. I can recall when they did this last thing after they ran out of money, they came back for a third, for a fourth bond issue. And I was on the opposition at that time and I found that architects and engineers were in command of their own construction project and they financed their own change orders out of the destination of the bond money so that they didn't get what they were going to get for the bonds because they allowed the change orders to be paid for out of the stink of the architect engineer. And I brought that to the attention. They fired the architects and engineers within two weeks and they pulled the plan for the fourth bond issue and it went away. But now, like I said, they're back here 20 years later and they're looking at all this script and I think that somebody, because it's traditional in California, these people write bond issues and write things and then they spend the money for something else. We can see that in Proposition H for the homeless housing, complete the first unit is $560,000. You know how much you're going to get for $1.2 billion for homeless people? This applies to, we're just talking about the EU also. We have to make the public aware of what's happening here. And if you look at this last partial tax we passed here, to turn out respectable to the bill compared to the amount of voters in the city, you have low information voters and you have a lot of demographic changes in this city where people aren't turning out to vote or they're not well informed as to what's happening with these bond issues and cost things. So I suggest that you get a copy of this thing if you haven't already got it, read it, because it's very informative and as I say, it boils down to the fact that they almost want to spend on a daily basis the operation and maintenance plus our bond money instead of out of their general fund and then liberate their general fund money for all kinds of other things. And that should recall these tensions of the voters. The voters should be informed of what this thing, the history of this thing and what's happening now and what could happen with this thing if they run all their operation and maintenance expenses on bond issue funds and then liberate all their general monies for all kinds of crazy things. So that's my closure here. I would like to see you collectively or individually oppose this bond issue and kill it. And if you don't, displace the information to other people and keep them informed as to the reality of this thing instead of what these people are trying to do to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting of San Marino City Council to Friday, January 31st, 2020, 8:30 a.m. in the barroom at the Hope Public Library, 1890 Honeyville Drive, San Marino, California.